And welcome you aboard to the county. And we all look forward to working with you and also our existing board as well that will be continuing. So we're looking forward to that and working with you in the years to come. Wanted to first open up to provide a brief overview of today's training educational meeting. That's really what this is about, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. I'll be facilitating the training program today. I hope you find it educational, enlightening, and hopefully it's a little fun. That's what we wanted to do, is just have a little fun with this and be able to help you better understand your role as a board member and procedurally how to handle board meetings and et cetera. So that's really what today is about. We've also invited your planning commissioners as well. So most of them are either online or present. We thought it was important for them to hear this as well and to make sure that they understand kind of the content of being a commissioner. And some of the items that we're going to talk about today is the Brown Act, roles and responsibilities, code of ethics, the board meeting procedures or meeting procedures, a high level of the planning commission, planning overview, what your role is with regards to planning in our community, as well as leadership responsibilities. So, and that doesn't cover everything, there's a lot more. So, but with that, we wanted to let you know that we plan to meet till about 1:00, give or take depending on the questions and dialogue that we have. If we go beyond 12:00, we'll make sure we provide lunch and have lunch for you, okay? But we want to continue with this and try to get out in a timely manner. So without further to do, I'd like to go ahead and open up the meeting with item number A. And before I do that, I would like for you to open up your website. I don't know if you all are on yet on the actual agenda. I would like for you to click on the second agenda item, regular agenda item, under Training by the County Administrative Officer, the second item. Open up that item, and in there you'll notice there's a lot of attachments. So if you can click on Conducting Board Meeting Language and go to the third page. And in there, you're going to see Outline for Conducting Board Meetings. And this is where we're going to have some dialogue and have you kind of actually partake in this meeting. There, there's an opening section, commencement of meeting, a moment of silence if we have a moment in silence at a later date, the Pledge of Allegiance. And that's where we're at today, right now, on item A, okay? And in there, the board chair, and this is really to help you understand managing a meeting if you're the chair or vice chair. And so with this, I'm going to call on, and I'm just picking out supervisors, okay? And no, okay, I'll wait here. Okay, okay, okay. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call on a supervisor, no particular order, and we're all going to take turns today in regards to calling out these particular items. So with that, I'd like to, are we good here? Do you want to, are we good? Okay. With that, I'd like to go ahead and call on Supervisor Colin Kosmicki to actually state this first item. And it's written out there on that page for you, so it gives you some guidance on what to say there. And in our agenda, just for reference, we normally put the supervisor that will be actually saying the pledge. So you just got to fill in the blanks. So Supervisor Colin.
So which part are you specific?
Item number A. And then when you look at page three of Outline for Conducting a Board Meeting, it's the third item down, Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, right, okay. So you're saying?
So you're going to pick somebody, and the somebody's going to be, it's documented, Supervisor Mark Medina.
So Supervisor Tiffany, will you please lead in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Well, actually, today it's going to be Supervisor Mark Medina.
Oh, sorry, Mark, didn't mean to slight you there.
Supervisor Mark Medina.
Not a big deal at all.
All right, so we like to go ahead and do that.
So I want to thank both of you, both Supervisor Colin Kosmicki as well as Supervisor Mark Medina for handling item number A. Item number B on our agenda is the Acknowledgement Certificate of Posting. And I'm going to call on Supervisor Bob Tiffany for that, but I'd like you to turn to page, I think it's.
Ray, excuse me.
Yes.
How do I get to this pastry? I'm not there.
Okay, okay.
I'm just in the main agenda, but I'm not sure.
Well, wait a minute. I think it's important that all of you know where we are at and also know where to find this information. I think it's important for all of you to have it at your fingertips, so we'll wait a few minutes.
I have a question. Ours is under consent. Do we need to break that out? Or can we just approve the consent agenda and be none of it?
Yeah, you could approve the consent agenda. You mean you have the certificate of posting, you have consent agenda?
Yeah, it's always an awkward thing for us.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it'd be great if you can, that whole section. Because we want to go back to it here and there.
Now, do I need to state what the certificate of posting is, or just?
No, this is certificate of posting.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so with that, Supervisor Bob Tiffany, are you there at that section?
I am.
So let me give you an example, just again, this is just training and, oh, she's not ready?
No, it's not, I'm not connected for some reason. I signed in at home and I left the computer on and I turned it off and restarted. It's not connecting to the wifi for some reason.
Okay, we got tech here. Can you please go get tech? And then I have a.
There was no issue yesterday when we tested it. It's automatically linked to the website, but not at this moment.
We'll hold off a second, Supervisors.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. It's not connecting to the wifi.
No, it just automatically went on yesterday.
It's okay, it's all good.
But I've been prepared.
It's all good. Okay, so I think in light of timing, Supervisors, we're going to go ahead and move forward. And what I would like to comment on this, Supervisor Bob Tiffany, is that when you look at the one, two, three, four, fourth bullet under opening there, that's in Dark Print Acknowledgement Certificate of Posting, it says Announce Certificate of Posting as listed on the agenda, that's just guidance for you. I just want to make sure that you understand, these are all kind of guidances for you to follow for every, for almost all of the items that you'll be hearing throughout the year, okay? So I just wanted you to have that at your fingertips. However, how I would announce this is if I were the chair, can I get a motion? So if you want to fill in that blank there, can I get a motion? If you're the chair, that's how I would proceed. And so now you have an example, Supervisor Tiffany, to go ahead and move forward. So can I get, you know, so I'll leave it up to you.
So there is a certificate of posting, it's listed on the agenda. I'd like to call for a motion, a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Yep. And you would first, you would first call for the motion, so somebody would say aye, and then there would be a second after that. So just as an example.
I call for a motion and then call for a second as well? Or does someone automatically second it usually?
So someone would go in and.
I screwed up, Bob.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve as staff recommendation.
So that's what his response would be to you.
Then do I call then for a second?
And then you'd call for a second and then, and then move forward with it.
Do I need to recognize that Supervisor Medina made the motion or and so and so made the second, or not necessarily?
So what you can do is, you can do that if you like for the record. You can, you know, announce the date and time for the record, all of those things you could do for the record. It's not necessary, we don't normally do that.
Okay.
But you could if you wanted to.
And then once it passes, then do I say that it's passed, or is it just?
We're moving on to the next item. That's usually how we proceed.
And I know that there's some times when, if it's an important issue or it's a close vote, then you call for a roll call.
Well, yes, exactly. That's, we'll get to those down the road, but yes, definitely. If it were another agenda item, perfect, that's exactly right.
Okay.
And then we, and we have some, and I'll be sharing with you that there's some attachments. Actually, this one in the very beginning, the first and second page, I believe, actually go through some of those examples, so.
Okay.
Yes. Good, so now we're on to our second, through our second item. And the third one is extremely unique, so I'm going to give a little bit more guidance with the third item. Notice of temporary procedures for Board of Supervisor meetings. Now, in light of COVID and in light of what has transpired this last year, there's been some unique things that have actually taken place at the state that has allowed us to continue our operation as a board, but have the ability to be remote a lot more easier and Zoom for the safety and health of the community residents and everyone. So with that, I just wanted to share that this page or two here that follows is an outline for Zoom settings for making sure that the public is aware, as well as providing guidance to the public that are on Zoom or on the telephone to be able to comment. And that's, I think, really important for your board members to hear their comments. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and this is.
If I could interject?
Go ahead.
Second, that is a decision for the board to make about at what point in time that you would like to reopen the boardroom to people in person, but at this point in time, we're recommending that it remain closed and have people participate by Zoom.
Yeah.
So you can agendize that at a future board meeting whenever you feel.
And also, right, exactly, from that point of view. And when we were open for the board, we also had, there was a capacity in seating as well. So we have the chairs marked, so we can't be at full capacity for the safety of folks. And then we have both. So for those that do want to attend, but feel uncomfortable going in person, they have the ability on Zoom to actually partake. So, thank you, County Council on that. With regards to this particular item, there's a lot of information, but we do provide some guidance with that. It's a small amount of guidance. So I'm going to go ahead and invite Graciela. So if I were the chair, I would invite Graciela Rodriguez to come up and actually present this item for the public. So Graciela?
Good morning, everyone. For members of the public who wish to speak during designated public comment sections, they may either press star nine or the raise your hand icon on the Zoom app to raise their hand. Once their hand is raised, I will go ahead and unmute them at their designated times. Every member will have at least three minutes to speak during public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Graciela. So that's, that's that particular item. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware. And that, that covers more or less everything all the way up into the regular agenda. Normally for us, it would probably then take us into public comment, department head announcements, board announcements, and all of those are outlined within this outline of conducting a meeting. And it's very similar to what you guys have already, what you supervisors have already done for the opening A and B, as well as C. Okay, so are we getting, no.
But it's okay, I've gone through all the attachments, I've read them. I actually printed them, made notes on them, but I grabbed the wrong packet as I left the house.
Okay.
I won't be able to read anything, but I.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So I won't call you, I won't pick on you today, but we can talk about this later on 101. I was actually going to have you talk on this next one, but what I will do is I will do this one and share with you the options. So basically, if you go to the first page of that same PDF, and you'll notice the third paragraph down, it's actually item A on that. Are you there? I will go ahead and read that. May read aloud or introduce the title of each item prior to receiving any report or discussion to allow those in the audience, those listening and for the recording, to know what matter is before the board, okay? So we do it differently at times. I just wanted to make sure that this board is aware that we've handled that in many different facets, in many different ways. The chair at times would call on the CAO, myself, to go ahead and open up an item. There are times where the board chair will open up the item. And there are times when we default it maybe to the department head to open up the item. So it really depends, but I think the gist of it is that we do want to put it on record. We do want to share what we're going to talk about, to put things in context for those, especially for those that are remote, right? Maybe on the phone that doesn't have access. What's the topic of conversation, right? So when you look at this, item number one, on the regular agenda itself, Training by the County Administrative Office, Ray Espinoza, or Ray, R. Espinoza. And, you know, normally that is a telltale sign for the chair or vice chair or whoever is leading the meeting to direct it to either that person or just direct it to me in any case. It could be a department head, it could be Health and Human Services, it can be, it can be any other item. And you're more than welcome to send it to me if need be, and then I can announce it, or I can defer to a department head, okay? So on this particular item, it says Discuss various topics but not limited to the Brown Act, Board Rules and of Procedures, San Diego County Board of Supervisors' Roles and Responsibility, Board of Supervisors' Role in Operations and Policy Direction, State of California Conflict of Interest Laws, okay? And that could be said, you could read that if you like, or if, you know, at times we may just read it. There are other times where we can talk about the item and just express it from our hearts and knowing the content, and that's at times what I do at times. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and invite up our speaker, our guest speaker for this item. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. And actually, yeah, so I covered that first part, so that's great. So I'm going to invite up our guest speaker. And Judith Prop is going to be presenting for us today. It's going to be a really great presentation. We've worked on this presentation with her two years ago maybe, and then we've invited her back. We think this is really important for new boards and commissions and et cetera to really understand and hear the Brown Act, the conflicts of interest, so on and so forth, as I mentioned. So Judith comes with a tremendous amount of experience. She's a lawyer, she basically practices public agency law, general government law, land use and sequo, real property, nonprofit. She's from, educated at Santa Barbara College and University of Illinois. And she's worked with different agencies, town, she was a town attorney, redevelopment agency general counsel for the town of Las Gadas for years, a senior assistant city attorney with Livermore, also a senior deputy city attorney with Santa Clara and Silicon Valley Power, as well as deputy attorney for the city of San Jose. So she comes with a wealth of experience, a lot of knowledge, and we're happy to have her and to present to you these topics. So with that, again, if you have any questions, so on and so forth, it's casual, so we want to make this fun. So Judith?
Good morning, Supervisors, staff and members of the public. I'm Judith Prop, I'm with Sloan, Sakai, Young &amp; Wong. We're outside counsel to the county on a variety of matters throughout the year. Not me, but some of my partners and other associates in the law firm, you'll see from time to time. We're happy to be back. We did this similar training in February of 2019 after the election in fall of 2018. And thank you to Administrator Ray Espinoza for inviting us back. I was talking to Commissioner Gonzalez a little bit before the meeting started, and I said, you know, I've done these trainings for years and years, and I'm still not, I'm not a stand-up comic, and I have still no way to make it fun and entertaining. But the hope today is that it is casual, it's informative, and it's really to give you the tools that you need to do the job that you were elected to and that you're volunteering to the community and so that you feel supported and that you have the resources available. By no means will today be a one-size-fits-all and answer all of your questions. Hopefully by now you've had some preliminary discussions with county council, with county administrator, done some review of your own about some of the rules and obligations of being a supervisor, or for those of you joining us that are planning commissioners this year, same goes to you. And the idea today is just to give you the high-level overview of things that you should be concerned with as it relates to open meetings, transparency. So, and as we go through this, just go ahead and let me know you have a question. We'll try and get to all of them. I'm relying on also Barbara and Ray. It's a give and take, they'll jump in where appropriate, and certainly on local things. Let me go back, okay. So as Ray indicated, we're going to talk about Brown Act, conflict of interest rules under the state law, and board roles and responsibilities, as well as the chief administrator officer roles, and then rules of procedures for your meetings. The objectives are just to give you that overview knowledge, so that you understand your roles and responsibilities, both on statutory and policy for the county. This is a discussion of best practices and a review of the rules of procedure. And we'll answer as many questions as we can, some of them we may need to look up, we may defer to getting back to you. We've done that in the past, if it's specific. And of course, you've got a very competent, capable staff available to all of you to continue this education process after today. Okay, let's open with Brown Act. So back in 1953, which seems archaic at this point, there was all sorts of backdoor deals that government was known for. And basically, and the state legislature adopted a series of rules to open up government to transparency and participation by the public. Legislature declared that the public commissions, boards, councils and other public agencies in the state exist for the conduct of the people's business. And it's the intent to, that all local government actions are open and the discussions are open and that the public has an opportunity to participate. Brown Act. And I'll try not to read the slide and just go ahead and add to it, but some of this is really important for the, for the basic understanding. But all meetings of your local agency should be open, public, and persons are permitted to attend, whether it's online or in person, as public safety and health allow. And meetings, for all the meetings of.
We have a question, we have a question?
Sure.
You know, just for the record here, I know, I think it was in March of this year or last year of 2000, Governor Newsom did have an executive order stating that the meetings can be closed, but has to be, we have to be available by some other type of media, whether it be Zoom, a phone, so forth and so on. Can we just talk about that real quick? Because, you know, on Tuesday, we are closed to the public, and I just want to reaffirm that that executive order is still standing and it is still a lawful order.
It is still. And in fact, that has been reinforced by the state that public agencies can exclusively meet online at this point. It is at the discretion and the health and safety of the local community, whether there is any in-person attendance. I'm going to go through, when we go through all the rules for a meeting and open and procedures, I'll go back through some of the changes in that teleconference.
Sorry about that. To me right now, that's very important because we're coming on to a new year, and I want to make sure the public understands that we are transparent, we are giving the residents the option, be a Zoom, be a phone, but we're protecting our staff from having people have, you know, in, in, being in the quarters here. Thank you.
Thank you, but it is still in effect.
Yes.
With respect to the state law on Brown Act, it is supposed to be expansive, not narrow. So the state legislature and courts have certainly erred on the side of inclusiveness for public access. We'll talk a little bit about what closed sessions are allowed and what those exceptions are. So who's covered by Brown Act? It's certainly all legislative bodies, such as a Board of Supervisor, Planning Commission, all of your other commissions that are established through the board procedures, and any of your committees created by resolution or other formal action, if it has a fixed meeting schedule and it's a standing committee. From time to time, a Board of Supervisors may establish a standing committee to meet on a particular issue, and those would also be subject to all of the Brown Act rules, the open, transparent government meeting rules, allowing for public participation. One of the few exceptions are ad hoc committees. From time to time, an issue may come before the Board of Supervisors that is a discrete, specific topic that has a narrow lifetime to study. And ad hoc committees must be less than a quorum of the board. That's true for the Planning Commission as well, that could establish an ad hoc committee. And those are not subject to the Brown Act. So some of the key pieces about the ad hoc committee exception is it's less than a. So some of the key pieces about the ad hoc committee exception is it's less than a quorum of your entire board or committee, and more important, it is set up for, to accomplish a specific task, short time period, and it's no fixed meeting schedule. They're going to meet as needed, maybe once, twice, a couple of times, as that ad hoc committee can accomplish. Give you an example. If the board of supervisors wanted to study amending or changing one of your rules of procedures, or all of your rules of procedures, maybe instead of going through them at each board meeting in detail, perhaps the chair would establish an ad hoc committee, appoint certain board of supervisor members, less than a quorum, and they would meet offsite and then come back to the full board with their recommendations and for discussion in front of the public and consideration of any action or no action.
I hate to do this to you, but--
No, keep going. This is your meeting--
When we're looking at ad hoc committees--
Sure.
Let's just say, hypothetically speaking, there was two board members, and then two city council members from Hollister, and two city council members from San Juan. Does that infringe on the Brown Act, or is that still within the Brown Act because they're three entirely separate bodies?
Let's clarify.
And they're following the same rules that you're speaking of? There was no meeting time? This is a specific agenda?
And specifically, because it's kind of a specific issue, assume the difference between if the committee was made up of two, two, and two versus one ad hoc decides to go ahead and meet with another ad hoc, but it's not a formal committee that's created with all six of those individuals, but an ad hoc here decides to meet with an ad hoc there.
Thanks for the clarification and the question. So the ad hoc committee is established by your board. So you have a board of five, so your ad hoc committee is going to be less than the quorum, so you've got those, the two members. And the two members could decide to meet with, to gather information, to share information with some other agency, so long as then you report back to your board as to what actions the ad hoc committee took, I mean, what they did, what they investigated, who you talked to, and then report back to the board. But there'd be no problem with that, since those, the other committee members were, they're not part of your committee, they're from another agency. Sorry. And the similar is, following that same thought, is theoretically, a board of supervisors' ad hoc committee could decide to meet with an ad hoc committee from another committee within the county. So it doesn't have to be a separate agency.
Except maybe if it was, if it's two ad hoc members of, two ad hocs of the board, that would be a potential problem.
Correct. But if it was a separate ad hoc committee not made up of board of supervisor members, conceivably, you could do that as well.
And then the sideline, though, is if you adopted a resolution that says, we're going to commit, create a committee of these people from the county, these people from the city council members, and these people from city of San Juan Batista council members, and if you're creating a formal committee with all those council members together with the board of supervisors, then that would be an actual committee.
A public meeting.
Yeah, public meeting.
Thank you.
And another question. If it's an ad hoc, and initially it's, there's no fixed meeting, but for some reason it develops into a standing committee of, you know, where it is regular, then it changes. So then it's no longer ad hoc, and then it would, the Brown Act would apply.
Right. It would default--
Even though, even though there's only two, potentially two members on that.
Generally, when there's less than a quorum, you would keep it as an ad hoc, but if it was going to be a regular, long-term, and a standing committee, even if there was only two members, but it was established by the board, then it would become generally subject to your Brown Act rules and regulations.
So, for example, I know that we have some standing committees that are, I don't know, we have two members of the board of supervisors that are, you know, the social services committee, for example, or it's a standing committee, I think, I don't know if this is, well, let's see, governor is like, is an ad hoc, I guess, but where do you draw the line between what was a standing and what is a ad hoc, even though it maybe still has only two members?
But it may also, you have to factor in, is it only two members of the board of supervisor, and are there other members of the committee from another committee or agency or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that came into my mind, if I may share, is like the intergovernmental, that's a standing committee. We have two, we have two, we have two board of supervisors that attend that meeting, and then there's also two members from the city council, and then both city councils that join it. But that's not an ad hoc, right? So I think it depends on timing. There's a lot of depending with this. If it's going to be meeting regularly, then it becomes not an ad hoc. Maybe that, maybe that intergovernmental at one time, maybe years ago, was established as an ad hoc, and then all of a sudden it became standing, you know, and then so that we had to change that.
Right.
So that's kind of an example of, oh, wait a minute, we have a lot of things we need to work on, we're going to go ahead and make it standing, let's kind of change that up, and it's not going to be an ad hoc anymore. That's just kind of an example. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, it does. So it's driven, and you pointed this out in the beginning, it's driven not just by the fact that you have a quorum or you don't have a quorum, but driven by whether it's a regular--
Regular standing.
Standing committee versus a--
And so on. There's other pieces to that.
Okay.
There's no rule for say?
Mike.
There's no rule for say, but if that committee has been meeting for more than six months, we should look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's go back. What is a meeting? So it's any gathering of a majority of the members of your local agency legislative body to discuss or transact business that comes before you. So what does that mean? So if two of you are at a coffee shop, back in the day when you did those things, I didn't get that for coffee and lunch, is that a meeting under the Brown Act? No. But did you meet because you intended to talk about items that are coming up on an agenda? We'll get to that later, but hold that thought. So that may be problematic, depending on how that gets communicated. But generally, what you're looking for on a board of two, or a committee of two, of five people, is any meetings over two members may be a violation of the open meeting laws under California law, under the Brown Act. So let's talk about serial meetings and what the likely scenario is for violations. Serial meetings. Supervisor Tiffany talks to Supervisor Medina, and when Supervisor Medina gets a call from Supervisor Gonzalez, he inadvertently shares his discussion that he had with Supervisor Tiffany. You have a meeting, you have a consensus, a meeting of the minds, a discussion about board business with three members. Inadvertent, certainly not intentional on most occasions, but that is what is considered to be a Brown Act violation, because you've got three supervisors talking about a matter that's coming before the board, or will come before the board, and sharing their thoughts, their ideas, their information outside of the public, and outside of the public meeting with the opportunity for the public to understand what that discussion was, the nature and the content. Okay. Any kind of joint conversation? So it can be so innocent when you talk, when two supervisors talk, the minute you talk to a third is when that becomes a higher risk. Okay. And you say, well, we know that, but in today's day and age of technology, you'd be amazed at how easy this is to violate. And it really, I'm going to go backwards. It starts with the email. The minute that you hit reply all on a substantive response to staff, and you have copied all of your other board of supervisor members, then you have likely committed a Brown Act violation, because you are sharing your thoughts, your analysis, your opinions, and information outside of a public meeting without the ability for the public to comment. There is a way to cure that. Don't worry. If it happens, there is a way to share that with the public, to make that part of the record for the meeting. But hitting, as simple as hitting reply all, can be a very dangerous thing. Staff will work with you, if they haven't already, about not doing that, about using your email judiciously and only responding to staff, not conducting discussion about board issues with, via email, to the extent that that's possible. And the other thing is, is that when a member of the public emails you, and they have copied all of the supervisors, again, even if you want to respond, it's really important that you respond only to that member and not copy everybody else. You can always copy staff so that they have that correspondence, and that they understand what's happening in the, you know, in that discussion chain.
One thing I was going to add for the board to be aware of, I've had multiple meetings with staff. Anytime there's going to be an email that's going to be sent to the board, there are times where we need to communicate on matters, is to blind copy the board members, because it just helps on the accidental reply all from the board member back, because it doesn't show up, and so you cannot reply at all. You cannot reply to your peers. So that's just one thing that we've been advocating internally with staff. If there's ever an email that does have to go out, at times, we just email directly, each one of you as well sometimes. So you may, I'm the only one that got it. That doesn't always, it's usually going to be it's all, but we may do it just one-off. But most of the time, if there is a message that needs to be brought to your attention on a matter or whatever, it's usually a blind copy. So for me, I usually blind copy the board, as an FYI. So that's just to help kind of reduce the chances of this actually happening, so.
So a question. You commented about members of the public, and I know we just, here in the last few days, there was one member of the public that sent an email to, I think, all of us up here in regards to vaccinations, and so we have to be careful individually respond. Also, a question, though, I have is, what if a member of the public reaches out to, and this has also come up, reaches out to me, for example, and says, we would like to talk to you, there's a small group of us, for example, we'd like to talk to you about an issue, in this case, let's say it's COVID, and we're also talking to these other supervisors. So they're not, you know, not as a whole, but each of us individually. Is it okay for us to do that? I mean, obviously, now, if they talk to us and they say, we already spoke to Supervisor Cosmickey, and this is his position, now we're starting to get into a danger area, I would assume.
That's correct. And you'll see that a lot. I'm going to let Ray chime in on this. You'll see that a lot on land use applications.
Hang on a minute, real quick. I have some messages that people can't hear us, so--
Mike.
I'm hearing that people can't hear us from the public.
Oh, okay.
So we need to make sure the mics are fully near us, the masks are deterrent, but--
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you.
And again, staff is going to want to jump in, but you'll see this a lot on probably land use applications, more than anything is where neighborhood groups or development teams want to meet with each of you. And I'll defer to Ray about what the general policy has been for the board and how you do that, and whether they have staff present, whether they don't have staff present. But one of the things that's going to be incumbent on each of you is to be sure that you let the people that you're meeting with know that you want to have a conversation, you want to hear what they have to say, but specifically caution them not to share what they've learned from another supervisor. And again, generally, you can help each other if, when you're meeting with them, you maybe ask questions, but you certainly don't, if you don't share an opinion, you don't tip your hand as to what you're thinking, and we're going to get into that a little bit later on fair process and the dangers of that. So it's twofold. It may also be not only a Brown Act issue, but it may become a fair process, due process, fair hearing, that you can't participate in a hearing because you've already formulated some sort of an opinion. I'm jumping ahead.
Judith, I'm sorry. Could you adjust your mic so it's a little bit closer to you?
I could do that. I think I can.
It might not be the best setup over there.
Here, I can tip. Sure. Is that better? I'm not tall enough to leap that over. Anyway. Sure.
Let's work with that, and if we get any more feedback, then we'll do some other adjustments.
All right. And I'll try and speak up.
Yeah.
Okay. So yes, those are of concern. Text, of course, no different than emails. Be careful about who's on that chain on a text, whether it's, you know, however you're sending the text from your laptop or your phone. And then phone, again, serial meetings. A talks to B, B talks to C, and shares what A said. So it doesn't really matter how that happens, but technology, because we're so used to being inclusive in our personal lives, it can be a higher risk as you do your board of supervisor business.
There's one point on the text and email.
Excuse me, can you please go up to the mic?
Sure. One point on the text, is this on? I can't tell. All right. One point on the text--
An email, additional caution is, those are documents. They are subject to the Public Records Act. So not only do you have an email that has copied everyone, you've also documented the fact that you violated the Brown Act. And members of the public can request copies of those emails, and unless they're privileged attorney-client communications, the county has to provide them. So, and that's another reason why we want all of the email correspondence or texts to be done on county devices, so that we can comply with the Public Records Act.
Thanks, Joel. One of the things that you will find useful is, if you're using technology to, from time to time, copy staff, let Ray or his staff know the conversations you're having, or what the meetings, or things like that. Again, staff can help you maneuver through this so that you don't inadvertently violate that. Again, the concept is, the public should be present, they should know what you know, they should be hearing what you're hearing. So you can have private meetings, but then we'll get a little bit later into how you share that information so that it's open and public. Discussions with staff are not subject to the Brown Act. So if you have questions about a matter that's coming before you, or that you think will come before you, or you just, as a board member, have inquiring minds and want to know, talk to staff, email with staff, they're your resource to get your questions answered. They then can get back to members of the public, or have those discussions with other board members. Again, staff can't share with other supervisors what each of you have shared with them. Again, that could be risky under the Brown Act, but it's certainly one of your avenues to get information, to be able to be sure that you're getting the information you need, is by working with staff and/or copying them on any kind of electronic communication. And I'm going to get to Joel's comment, and thank you, Joel, for popping up, is a reminder about email communications and its texts. Back in a number of years ago, and the final decision was in 2017, city of San Jose, their council members ran afoul of email communications. The city got a request for all records related to a development project. And so the city went through all of their emails, went through all of their phone records, and provided one of the news agencies all of the city records. And the news agency, hey, wait a minute, we saw your council members texting. We know there's been texts between your council member-- there's been texts between your council member or emails and the development team, those are public records, we want those too. And sure enough, as that case wound through the trial court, the appellate court, and went all the way up to the California Supreme Court, Supreme Court in California has decided that any records regarding agents, local agency business, if you were an elected official, an appointed official, or an employee, are subject to disclosure under the public records. So most counties and cities have established, uh, emails for you, so that you're only using your county, uh, emails, so that you, the county has access to your records. But if you use your personal electronic devices to communicate county business with members of the public, among yourselves, um, with staff, and the county gets a request for records related to a certain subject matter, your personal records, your personal emails may be subject to release as it relates to that topic. So again, it puts a higher burden on you to be able to, you know, have to do your own search of your email, and produce that to county staff, and work with county council to, to figure out what's, um, protected or, and, and what's open and things like that. So for a lot of, um, elected and appointed officials, most counties and cities say, hey, just use the resources that you're provided by your local agencies so that you don't even trip over that when it happens. Yes, Supervisor Medina.
Just, for the three new supervisors, Jim Gilio had told me some good advice. Any email you send, think of it as it can be printed in your local newspaper, on social media, and other means. So when you hit that send button, you wanna make sure that the people that are viewing it, everyone could view it. And that was something that I, uh, remember to this day, and I'll continue to, uh, think of that when I hit that send button, just so everyone knows.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's good advice.
Yes.
What about personal notes, you're taking notes, you're having a conversation, I like to take notes when I'm talking to constituents or staff members, whether it's on Google Docs, or, um, and maybe there's some discretion on written notes, um, are those open to Public Records Act?
So that's interesting to, uh, question, and it, it depends. There is an exception for what's called deliberative process, and what your thought, what you're thinking, how you come to formulate your opinion. And as a board of supervisor, there is limited exceptions for, um, drafts, um, notes, or preliminary documents that may show the deliberative process, how a local agency gets to their final decision. There are some protections at certain points, but you have to presume that if you're in, you're sitting up during a board of supervisors' meeting and you're typing away, or you're handwriting, or, um, most, the recommendation is, don't text, don't use your phone during a meeting, um, but, uh, I've had a member of the public say, "Council member so-and-so was taking notes, um, during a meeting, I'd like to see those." Um, again, it depends on, was it done in the normal course of business, was it just for the moment, were, were these documents retained, did you intend to keep them and archive them, were they just for that moment? Um, so the answer is, it may be subject to a records release if somebody asked, but don't let that chill you from taking notes to help you remember conversations and things like that. But again, as Supervisor Medina said, is just imagine that everything you say, post, or in, um, would be on the front page of your local newspaper, and figure out, or blown up in a court of law at a, at a future trial or something, and just get that gut test of, you know, is there anything significant? Like, if you're taking a note saying, "I can't believe that guy said that," or "I can't believe that this is," you know, or, or some, um, less-than-flattering term about somebody you're meeting with, no, I mean, don't, don't do it, or don't keep it, kind of thing. But if it's just for the moment, so that you can come back to that conversation, by all means, but just know that it could be subject to disclosure. Not, not necessarily, it may be exempt, but again, the caution is, assume that it's gonna be subject to public release.
What about conversations with the, the public? You know, somebody calls me and maybe they're not under the presumption that if I'm taking notes, that, that conversation is potentially open to a Public Records Act request?
Well, I think that, you know, that's gonna be a judgment call for each of you individually, but I think you have to explain to members of the public, when you meet with them, that your obligation is to conduct, um, matters regarding county business in public. And we'll get to this a little bit later, under the fair hearing process, but one of the, um, key things about, uh, hearings is when you, as a supervisor, um, shares your opinion on a matter you're gonna vote, you're gonna, um, try and sway your other supervisors to go with your way, if you've learned something from a conversation you had with a member of the public, you have an obligation to disclose that. You don't get to just do all this, um, uh, backdoor research. If you looked on Google, and you read news articles, and you talked to people, or you called experts, you're gonna have that obligation to disclose that. So if you think that the member of the public is going to be sensitive about what they're sharing with you, then I think it's incumbent on you folks to advise them that, that those conversations are not necessarily going to be protected or privileged, because it's not their disclosure, but it, but it most likely will be yours.
So right, so speaking of that, so right now, because of the time we're in, I think we're all getting a lot of phone calls from different constituents about how we should be handling COVID-19. You know, let's say enforcement, or, you know, so we're getting phone calls, and, uh, these are private phone calls, that someone's calling us and saying, you know, I had one yesterday, telling me very strongly his opinion on, on, you know, how we should be handling it. So those kinda conversations, I guess two questions. One is, I should be very careful how I respond to that phone call, and maybe not, you know, basically state what my opinion is at that time, I should just listen. Uh, and then number two, potentially, I have to, uh, when I'm, when I'm in a meeting, you know, when we're talking about COVID enforcement, do I have to call out individuals? Or do I, or do I say, I've gotten a number of phone calls, I mean, how do you handle something like that?
Let Joel address the land use issue and how that varies from other types of issues.
So I'm gonna jump in, and then I'll, I'll defer to Joel, and, and maybe even Ray about the best practices for, for yours. Certainly, um, if you've learned information, and you're relying on it to formulate a final opinion, and it's influencing your decision about how you're going to participate in, in county business that comes before you as a supervisor, then from the dais, at some point, you're going to have to say, "Thanks, staff, thanks, you know, members of the public, I've heard lots of comments from members of the public, um, and I appreciate everybody's input, and one of the comments I heard was X, Y, and Z, and that really resonated with me, and because of that comment, um, I'm, I'm going to vote this, or I, I take this position." You don't necessarily have to identify who, who did it, but you may, it depends on what it is you learned, and whether that's a reliable source, and maybe you're, you know, the folks in the audience, or, I mean, online, or your fellow board members wanna know, you know, was that reliable information, but somehow that swayed you. That may actually be disclosable. But again, I think that, um, throughout your process, you're always going to be, um, talking to the public, that is your role, I mean, that, that is what you do as, as a supervisor. So this isn't intended to chill that, it's just to be conscious about what might be disclosable and what might not, whether it's, um, uh, notes, or having to call out, um, a, a specific, uh, comment or anything like that. And I'll defer to Joel on the, um, land use arena, where it is very specific about how that, how that happens.
Yeah, well, it depends on the role that you happen to be playing and the context. Uh, as we will get into, uh, as supervisors, you wear, you know, we're used to separation of powers in our government, we have a legislative branch, a judicial branch, and an executive branch, well, guess what, you wear all three hats. So when you're acting in a legislative capacity, you're gonna be lobbied by people, and that's gonna frame how you decide on a legislative matter.
But, um, if I can interject, like, if I, if, if somebody, ten people talk to me about COVID, and it's a purely legislative matter, I don't believe that you have to disclose.
Well, that's my point.
Okay.
My point is, as a, when you're acting in a legislative capacity, you're gonna have opinions, you're gonna express those opinions, that you're gonna campaign on particular issues, all of that's, uh, part of your role as a legislative, uh, working in a legislative capacity. However, if it's a particular public hearing matter about where you're acting in what's known as a quasi-adjudicatory capacity, you, you're making a decision about a particular permit, or, um, or grant as it affects a specific individual or situation, then there's due process, fair hearing consideration, and, uh, and those, uh, that's a different situation, and I'll deal with that more in, in my presentation, but I wanted to make you aware of that distinction. It really depends on what capacity you're acting in the circumstance.
Excuse me, Joel, where does it, where do you transition from legislative role to, uh, to a judiciary role? I mean, you know, for example, COVID, uh, we're gonna be discussing on Tuesday, possibly enforcement actions, um, eventually, it will become, a decision is gonna be made, or may not be made, but there's a transition there, so I mean, I'm not clear there.
Well, let me clarify that. So if you're making policy, or if you're establishing rules, uh, you're adopting an ordinance or a resolution, you're acting in a legislative capacity.
Mm-hmm.
If someone has, you know, if you are having a public hearing about whether or not to fine somebody because they opened their business, or they wore a mask, or they did something or other that is subject to, um, uh, a public hearing, due process requirement, before you, uh, impose a penalty, that's a, a adjudicatory. So that, that may help clarify that for you.
Okay.
You're gonna hear plenty about that this morning from a number of us, because that is in your different roles and different hats that you wear, we're gonna try and help you understand which role you have.
And, and I'm sorry to keep asking questions, but, um, to back up just slightly, back to what Colin was, uh, discussed, as far as notes, so for example, just preparing for a meeting, for Tuesday's meeting, you know, I'm kinda old-school, so I'm probably gonna be making, you know, notes about different issues, um, on paper, bringing, you know, with me to the meeting, you know, to remind myself what I wanna speak of. Those potentially, those notes would be potentially, and then, um, a related question is, is it permissible to, you make notes, to then, when you're done with that issue, to shred it, so that, you know, if somewhere down the road, there's not even a, you know, a chance, I don't know where you draw the line on stuff like that?
Sure. If you need to make notes, or, you know, or comments, or whatever, and I've seen, um, supervisors have pages of questions, you're gonna have projects or, or, um, legislative matters that come before you, or discussion items, and you're gonna have questions for the staff, you have questions that you want answered before you make a decision, um, it, it's completely understandable where you'd write that out ahead, most of us can't remember that amount of information that you're gonna have in your board, uh, agenda packets on a, on a regular basis. Um, generally, I've not, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna add one thing, just as a rule of thumb, just keep it, try to, I'm trying to, gonna simplify it here a little bit. A rule of thumb is, just think, everything that we're doing, you, you need data to, to make a decision, right? You need to hear from people to make a decision, that's, those are your, that's your role. And, and at the end of the day, I think the, the key point to bring from here is expressing your belief on a matter, and having it be, having every one of you know before, before you reach that board meeting and you vote on it. That's kinda the point with this, I think. So just be mindful of that, um, just, you know, you can collect information, you can talk, you can, you know, try to gather and, and have an understanding, but it's, it's when you start, "I do not like that because of this," or whatever, and you start, you know, explaining that to each one of the board members during a different period of time, or, I think, right here, in communications, you know, posting it online, or, that becomes a real problem at that point. So I think, you know, I think the essence of this is, don't be hindered by taking notes, I, I have to take notes, if I don't take notes, I'm gonna forget. And with you, I think you're starting to realize how many calls you get, how many meetings you have. And before you know it, it's like, okay, what did I do yesterday? Who, who, you know, you have to go back and reference your notes to be productive. So I would highly recommend you not ta-, you know, keep doing what you're doing to be successful, um, just be mindful of, you know, your take, and then, um, expressing that to other folks, that's really, I think, the essence of this.
And we are gonna have a training on, on transitory, um, this Public Records Act, as it specifically pertains to emails and transitory records. Um, so that's gonna come up probably now in February, but, uh, the, the, the actual law says that it doesn't require disclosure of any of the following records, and includes preliminary drafts, notes, or inter-agency memorandum that are not retained by the public agency in the ordinary course of business, if the public interest in withholding those records clearly outweighs the public interest in disclosure. So there's two different types, there's a, uh, San Diego, I believe, case, as it pertains to preliminary drafts that are in the land use capacity, in preparation of EIRs and such, and preliminary drafts as they are in, like, um, I'm preparing, um, a memo, a letter to the board, and I have, I have three different drafts, but only the final draft is what may be saved, because all the other ones are preliminary ones that weren't kept in the ordinary course of business. So notes that you may have for a specific board meeting, in preparation for that board meeting, if you're gonna, if they were just your questions that you're gonna ask for the day, then you wouldn't keep those in the ordinary board meeting, but let's say that you're gonna have periodic meetings with staff on a code enforcement issue, or let's just say, any issue that you wanna keep long-term notes on, because you've met with the people, you know, twelve months ago, six months ago, and three months ago, those notes that you may be keeping in the scope, scope of business, so you can remember what happened twelve months ago. So there's different types of notes, and, but the issue is whether they're a preliminary note, and whether they're kept in the ordinary course and scope of business, and then the second view, if they are preliminary notes, and if they have been kept, then you have to look at the public interest in disclosure. So we're gonna have a training on that in February, hopefully. Um, Orange County had a great transitory record policy, which, you know, and then they were sued, and then they withdrew it, but, uh, so it's an evolving topic throughout the state about, specifically regarding emails.
And, and just from a process point of view, um, you know, going through, um, or, or creating policy, that's what you do, may take time, may take six months, may take, may even be longer. So, you, you know, you have to have those notes, you should have notes and be able to reference it, um, because it may take a lot of time, uh, to process them.
None of this is to, to chill your, the way you do business as a supervisor, it's just to give you a heads-up, that we don't want you to come back in a year, or call Ray, or, or Barbara, and say, "But you didn't tell me that," you know, "I might have to turn over my notes if they're, if they're permitted," or something. It's just more to give you a framework in which to work in, not to change your pattern and practice. That said, um, let's talk about social media, hot topic, texts, blogs, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, huge change, the legislature finally, um, last session, effective this year, this January first, codified what you can and can't do as a local official with your social media and the Brown Act. And this is huge for a lot of you, because you are linked on a variety of social media. We're gonna, maybe I'm, you know, Joel kinda previewed it, um, and you've heard a little bit about, uh, fair process and due process, we're gonna get to it much more in-depth, but here's another preview. The new le- legislation says, you as a local, um, elected official, or an appointed official, I mean, it's gonna hold true for your planning commission, or any of your boards or commissions. or any of your boards or commissions, you may not directly respond or react to a post or shares concerning your local agency business posted by another person of the same legislative body. So if Supervisor Medina and Supervisor Tiffany and Supervisor Koznicki and Supervisor Gonzalez and all of you are friends on Facebook, or you are all on LinkedIn together, which also has a thumbs up or a like or whatever, the new law says you may not respond or react. So that's emojis, that's a like, it's not even a comment, if it's from somebody else on your board or commission. And it doesn't mean to say that if somebody gets a new position outside of the, you know, or they have some success in their personal life or their professional life, that you can't like it. You can certainly congratulate each other that you've got some new achievement in your personal or professional life, but if it is regarding county business, then you are heavily restricted now under this new legislation. We don't have any case law yet, we don't know how it's going to play out. And, but, but now the legislature, first, the state is looking at the Brown Act with technology and starting to bring it forward into the current century and addressing some of these issues. You're going to be hearing a lot more about this as the year unfolds. But let's talk about what you may do. You can answer questions from the public. If you've got some sort of a blog or any kind of social media, and somebody asks you, you know, "Is the board thinking about this?" Yes, that matter may come up, it's coming up at the next meeting, it may be coming up at a future meeting. But, you know, where do I find out information? You certainly can answer a question from the public. You can provide information that's equally available to the public. Upcoming hearings, meetings, information that's already posted on the county website. You can also, as a supervisor, because your role, like Ray said, is to talk to people, find out what your constituents think. You can solicit information from the public. So you could use social media to find out what your constituents are thinking. Of course, problem is, you don't know who's going to be responding, and whether they're your constituents or not necessarily. You, you may or may not know everybody in your district, so, but you can do that. So there's a lot of things that you can do on social media, even under this new legislation. But again, it, it is more restrictive. We certainly thought that that was the way the courts were going to trend and the legislature was going to trend, but this is, is very clear this year. So watch out about social media and how you use it in your role as a supervisor. Questions, comments? I mean, we can go through...
I, I have a comment about the, the new AB 992. Mark, thank you. Over the last year, he has been posting information, sorry, posting information on the numbers, the COVID numbers, the positive test results, when someone passes and so forth. And it's a great informational tool, but I would frequently, prior to 1121, is I would comment on that, you know, something. And now I feel like I'm being muffled here, and I can't even, and muzzled, that I, I can't even respond, because that issue is coming up on Tuesday. And so, and I don't want to take that away from you, but can we somehow get that dashboard to be coming directly from David, the RPIO, so that that way, it's not coming from someone from this legislative body, and there's that potential to chime in. And I appreciate what you've been doing, and it's very informative to the, to the public. Comments have been positive and negative in terms of the information shared. Somebody's phone is buzzing like crazy. And so I, I just want to be able to... I personally have chose not to make any comments on Facebook since hearing of this, and especially since it went into effect, and we're sworn in, in, on the 4th of, of this month. But it's just been kind of, it's hard to wrestle with this. So I've shared this with other people in other jurisdictions who are having similar issues, but I just would like to be able to put something on Facebook. I understand about sharing the information, gathering information, soliciting information from the public, but I, I'm kind of concerned.
So, if I may, so I do know that David does message out through Nixol. I do know that there, there is a social media presence. I will verify and make sure that is happening. I'm, I thought that that is happening. I'm pretty sure that's happening. I see that almost every week.
It's happening, but it's, you know, the way I look at it is, with Facebook, with any social media, we as elected officials, we can post what we want. The question at hand is, you just can't respond.
Right.
That's so that, you know, whether it's David or anyone posting on it, you just can't respond. So it's the same, you know, it's the same outlook.
Well, it's actually not.
Yeah, I think that that didn't answer the question. Like, basically, you could cut and paste that post.
And, and share equally, yes.
You could share it yourself, you could share it yourself. You just can't respond to another post.
I mean, even a simple emoji, even a simple emoji of a sad face, when we had five deaths, I'm like, oh my God, did I violate the, you know, the procedure? Because, because I know that conversation's going to come up on Tuesday, and...
But even if Dave was to post it, you still can't do that.
Well, if he's not...
So it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
If he's not part of your legislative body, so...
But if she, if she posts something, then no one else can post after that.
Right.
That's what I'm referring to, right?
You could post...
Not after she posts.
Not after she posts, because then you have two people. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Right. On your Facebook or your social media, your Instagram, whatever blog you're using, you could post, you could post the same thing. Certainly, if county staff is preparing it, you all could post it. You just can't do the sad face. I mean, and, and again, it, it's not a judgment. It's, I mean, and it's, and it's going to be different, because that is...
I, I understand the ramifications. Yes, I understand.
Yeah, it's just, you know, the way that this law is evolving, is that the idea behind it, if you look at the legislative intent, is that you're not forming a consensus, you know, outside of a public meeting. You know, that's, that's just debatable. But, you know, that, that's the genesis of this. And you can see where, you know, you could, by liking, disliking, commenting, might actually inadvertently do that. But, but again, you could still post, and if the county's posting it, you could actually respond to a county post, because the only restriction is that you can't respond to somebody else that sits on your own legislative body.
But then only one person could respond. So the first person that responds would get dibs with the response, because nobody else could respond to that same post.
I, I think the safest thing, in my opinion, is, and, and I do, I did this last night, I think, when you had posted something. Just when, let's make a pact here, that we're not going to like, we're not going to comment on any of our individual posts. It's, I'm sorry, maybe I'm oversimplifying it.
No, no.
But it's completely simple.
I agree with you.
It is, it is a balancing act, because...
It's first come, first served, right?
You know, with social media nowadays, that's how so many people get their information. And, you know, to what was discussed earlier, I think we may need to look more at where Dave is getting, putting out information.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there are, you know, certain popular social media sites, Facebook pages within our county, that, you know, we may want to look at, you know, that's where he's posting stuff. And, and I was thinking about, for example, you know, the vaccinations, you know, and the, and the tier and all that. But it is slippery slope, because, you know, you, you're out there. I mean, some of the, some of the Facebook pages in themselves, depending if you're a member of that or not, you are somewhat tipping your hand as to what your political feelings are about certain things. I, you know, I can think of several that are, one's very conservative, one's more liberal, you know, that kind of a thing. I don't know if that's a risk. But what happens is, you get on social media, and then people, naturally, they comment, or they, they want to give their opinion, and they're expecting you to respond. You can't really respond. So, anyway, it's, it's difficult.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so I, I hear all of you. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to make sure that this item's on our agenda Tuesday during COVID, just to, just to talk. Where, where's the information at? And that's something we'll make sure you understand in the poll.
You know, the last thing is, if a supervisor's tagged on a post, what are we to do? Just ignore it?
Basically.
Right?
I think you can't respond.
Yeah, that's, you know, what I'm referring to.
Like if all of you are tagged on this thing?
Well, a lot of the, yeah, a lot of that happens, is, you know, you'll get a Facebook post. Go ahead, Robert, you can answer my...
I just want to, is this thing on? A lot of times, especially hot button issues, members of the board are tagged. Can one of them just say, "Due to a new law, we cannot comment," and just leave it at that? Because you don't want to just not respond, because the members of the public will say, "You're ignoring us." So I think somebody has to step up and say, "Due to whatever the new law, AB 992, we cannot respond," and just leave it at that.
But couldn't one person respond? Like, if somebody, if you wanted to?
But who wants to respond?
Well, the challenge, though, theoretically, I mean...
Chair, maybe the chair, we can, we can somehow talk about it and say, maybe the chair should just do what Robert said. I don't know, I'm just...
The officials, the, the board, yes, I, I agree.
I mean, if, yeah, if they're, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
It depends on whether somebody that you know is personally tagging you, or whether they're tagging the whole board.
They usually tag the whole board.
Yes.
And, and again, nothing in this, so for the COVID situation, if there's information available to the public, to all of you, you can certainly share that with your constituents. You can post it on your site as well. If you're all at a, in the future, at a ceremonial, a ribbon cutting for something, or some new, you know, you could share a picture of that. You just can't all like that thing, you know, the same thing, kind of.
But I do, I do think that, as you were saying, Ray, we need to look at what needs to get out there. Certainly with the COVID information, it would be easier if all of us up here knew that on all these key sites, that information is getting out there. So that, you know, I don't have to wonder, should I be, you know, should I be posting this? Or is Colin going to take care of that? Or is Mark going to? Or be, you know what I mean? We, you know, so I think we should be, if we knew that it's going to be taken care of by Dave, then we don't have to worry about getting it out there.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I completely concur and agree. We, we have presented, you know, all, all the websites and, and everything before, but I think it's a great reminder. We have a new board. I think it's important that you know where to be able to pass that information to your constituents. I think it's important. We'll just go back again, and we'll do it regularly. I think it's important, because that's, that's one thing that this board or the board had requested, is to make sure that we communicate. And so I'll make sure that our PIO, David Westrick, presents and informs you of what's happening and on the communication side of things.
But to be clear, we can share our views on local issues on social media, correct? I mean, there's a presumption that others on the board are going to see those views. Otherwise, we're definitely being muzzled.
Yeah, no, yeah, you can share, we just can't comment.
As long as you don't comment.
Yeah, as long as the rest of us don't comment.
And then Supervisor Koznicki, we're going to talk a little bit more in the land use context about where that line is, about when you've stepped over, or where, where that line is, so that you don't step over and you can still participate, and it's still a fair process, fair hearing, and things like that. So, so yes, but, today, I think unfortunately, you're going to hear that from a lot of us, is that, you know, these are guidelines and rules and regulations, and how they're applied doubles in the detail, of course. Okay. Again, what's not a meeting, we, we've talked about this, kind of beat a dead horse, that individual conversations or contacts between less than a majority are, are not a meeting. You can call a colleague and have a discussion. It's just, might be risky if there's a third member that's involved in that. But as long as you know where that line is, and where you can draw it and not cross it, is, is what the goal is today. Okay. Not a meeting. You can attend public gatherings or conferences, you can go to classes together, you can go to ceremonial, social functions, you can, you know, meet up in the coffee shop in the community downtown. Although, interesting enough, city of San Francisco, there was a majority of the Board of Supervisors that was seen lunching at a San Francisco restaurant last year. And wouldn't you know that that was front page on the Chronicle newspaper the next day, because there was a presumption that they were violating the Brown Act. Not, not, nobody knows for sure. They were, you know, requested to share their, you know, what they were meeting about. But there's always that appearance of impropriety that you have to be careful about, too. What's not a meeting? And you can go to open notice meetings of another body, of a local agency. I'll defer to Ray if you have a, a local policy about that. It can be intimidating if all of you were to show up at the Planning Commission on a, on the same night, and that's usually not recommended. But I've worked in a lot of jurisdictions where planning commissioners sit at Board of, you know, Supervisor meetings, and, and one or two Board of Supervisors go to Planning Commission meetings, because you want to hear. Now with everything online, it's easier to just do it remotely and things like that. But there's nothing to prevent you from attending. We'll get into a little bit about whether you can participate and, and the risks on that as well. Okay. Questions before we move on on this?
Maybe you're going to get into this, but something I've been involved in is the Samuel County Business Council, for example, and we would invite members of the city councils, what are members of the Board of Supervisors. Now, on a, we generally were careful to just invite two at a time, but on occasion, we'd have, you know, three, let's say, supervisors show up. Are you, if they're, if they're just sitting there listening, there's probably not a problem.
If, if it's...
But if we call on a supervisor to make a comment about a particular issue, is now or is there a problem, because there's three of them there?
So again, it's, it, it's the scope, and you're right, for social events, for a business council, a rotary, any of those kinds of, you can all be there. When you're, if one of them is speaking, and, doesn't mean that the other ones can't be there, but, but you couldn't have a quorum doing a panel at one of those meetings without it.
Multiple supervisors are making comment on an issue, because by definition, the Business Council, we talk about county issues. So it's not just, it's not just strictly social.
It's, so if there's quorum, and there's more than, you know, the quorum there, there's three of you, and you are talking about matters that are county business, that are going to be under your consideration, then likely, that, that will be construed as, as overstepping the line.
Shouldn't be doing that.
Because the public's not invited, they're not all there, they're not hearing what you say, and things like that. There is a way to have a forum. I mean, Legal Women Voters and other organizations do that, and it's open to the public.
Yeah, and I was just going to add, I'm going to be discussing a lot of, a lot of, what do we do for our meetings, committee, commissions, board meetings. So I'm going to have that part a little later. But with this, when it comes to the Business Council, there's usually just two board members. There at times, if it, if three have been invited, one of the board members will say, "Oh, no, I'm out." And that's just the way it is. So that's a good rule of thumb for all of you. For some reason, you get invited, or whatever, just make sure that there's no more than two. That's basically it. And, you know, normally, I work with the Business Council. We've, okay, you know, there's agenda items, we're going to invite an RMA director, we're going to invite the CAL, you talk about county business. Or the board member, maybe a board member's invited, it has something that deals with his district. So those are the things that kind of come up. But, but just a rule of thumb, no more than two. If you see more than two, then just go ahead and leave.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. What's not a meeting? Again, it, it's not that you can't be together, it's that you can't discuss, discuss county business among yourselves. It can't be part of a scheduled program, and, you know, outside of a noticed meeting, noticed under the Brown Act in the county. Okay. Where can you hold a meeting? Well, that's a little new now. General rule is you have to meet within the boundaries of your jurisdiction. There are some limited, narrow exceptions. If there is, for some reason, you want to go visit a project site, or some, something that you're doing outside of, outside of the county, but generally, you're restricted to meet within your jurisdictional boundaries. Meetings and documents must be accessible to all. And so we talked about that. So when an agenda is posted, and all of the supporting staff reports, all of the documents, has to be accessible now online, has to be available at the county offices, it has to be made accessible to the disabled. Can be no restrictions on admittance to these open meetings, with the exception of the governor's order, no entrance fees, and documents have to be placed in alternative locations, or usually placed in a library or some other public locations, and to... And to your benefit, the staff just does that seamlessly. You don't even have to worry that that's being done. It just happens like magic.
So real quick on that, I was actually going to highlight that for the certificate of posting as an example. So I'd like to ask, or maybe, maybe ask of you, do you know where those postings are for our county?
I do.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
The old courthouse and then here. But my question was, why can't there be other locations? Because not many people are mobile, but I don't know where the, the other location might be.
Yeah, and it's online, we have it online. So that, yes, you are correct. Those are the two locations we have. I wanted to make sure that was available and aware to you and the public. It doesn't mean that we can't put it in more locations. We could do that and we can discuss that at a later date. I do want to mention, and I'm going to probably highlight this, depending on timing, that there's a lot of these things that I like to come back during the board retreat and actually discuss. You know, the, the actual board's roles and responsibilities. Some of these nuances, I think these are really good topics to talk about and delve into a little bit more. But I think, you know, there's so much content. We're only in slide, I don't know which one we're on now, but we've still got a lot to go. So, but yes, I think we can and I think it's good for a discussion item later, so.
We're about a third of the way through. If somebody needs to stand up, stretch, I mean, I know we're just kind of racing through this, so just let me know. Okay. Teleconference, by telephone, video. Your quorum has to be within the, located within the agency's jurisdiction, even if you're offsite. And that comes up in the normal course, not under the current rules. But somebody's on vacation and it's an important meeting or an important item and you want to participate. Work with staff. There's all sorts of rules under the Brown Act about how to notify where you are and participate by teleconference. Interesting, under the current Brown Act rules, not the new order by the governor, you have to identify each teleconference location. So if you're in Hawaii on vacation, you actually have to post it on your hotel room or in the hotel or you're at an, somewhere else. And the public has to be able to access it. It can't be on like some private, behind a private locked gate. So there's all sorts of reasons you will or won't going forward when meetings aren't always online, that you may or may not want to do the teleconference option if you're outside of the jurisdiction. And just work with staff on that. But there are specific rules that if you're not going to physically be present within the jurisdiction, how to participate. And one of the things that's both in the current as well as, you know, the emergency rules is for all teleconference meetings, anybody participating by phone or video, roll call votes have to be taken. That's a little nuance that's come up. Current teleconference rules. And that goes back to the order by the governor's office. It allows agencies to participate in meetings by teleconference. You just have to have one location. It's usually your, you know, main, main location, your county offices, where there's actually a physical location. Everybody else can be accessible by teleconference. The public has to not only be able to access it, but to be able to participate. They have to be able to have, as staff said, their public comment period. And there has to be all sorts of identification on how to access the agenda and the materials if you're not in a physical location.
And the new governor's orders, and this has been, you know, some disinformation that is flying around. Wanted to make sure that you can validate this, or I should say, correct it. Is that person that is participating via Zoom must be, their picture must be shown and they must be, is that, I believe, what I read was that's false. I just wanted to make sure that I'm correct.
Yeah, I, there is no requirement that the video, because you can participate by phone. There's no obligation that you actually turn on your camera or even have a camera. Again, it's that, a lot of people, I, I mean, even if you can't believe it, I mean, plenty of old computers don't have video capability and you don't want to in any way not be inclusive. So that's why phones allowed for that. So no, no mandatory video.
Thank you, that's, that's all, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
That's correct. And truly, a lot of people would be chilled by a requirement that they had to show up on, on, in, in, you know, in video these days.
Oh, I'm speaking of just elected officials, not constituents. I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about an elected official, when they're participating via Zoom, do they have to show that, you know, they're, they're there and they're?
So it's certainly going to be preferred because your constituents want to know that you're there and that you're paying attention. And the concern has been, and I just comment that anecdotally, if you're distracted and you're doing something else, then there can be an issue about whether it's a fair process, due process.
Yeah, but that is, once again, that's all, you know, that's different. I'm talking about legally, is it, is it written in the ordinance or the executive order?
I haven't seen that in the executive order mandating that you're.
I haven't seen it either, but I'm just hearing things around here. And I want to make, I want to just, you know, could you possibly check on that? And that way, maybe on Tuesday, I can give a little bit of a update saying exactly what we're talking about.
Because you have two questions here. You have one as to the public calling in.
Well, the public, no, 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 the public I knew already. I'm referring just to the elected officials.
Those of us on this jurisdiction, yes, okay. And I think as propriety and so many important issues are coming up for the board, I think we should all be here and if we can't be here, it should be a video conference, an active live video conference.
In person, yeah.
Yes, if they can't be here in person, yes.
So quickly, I'm going to run through these. This is, is more on your staff, but just to make sure that you understand. The only thing that can be discussed at a meeting is something that is on an agenda that's been duly noticed and that's why you've got that certificate of, of, of notification about your agenda posting. Agenda has to contain a brief general description of each item to be discussed. It specifies the time and location of the meeting. Regular meetings must be posted at least seventy-two hours prior to the meeting in the public location and website as Ray indicated. And the agenda has to provide the opportunity for public comment on general, on items not on the agenda but relevant to the board and items that come before each item that comes before the supervisors that you're going to actually deliberate, weigh or make a decision on as well. So most agendas have multiple comment, public comment period because it's on each agenda item plus a general time for items not on the agenda. Special meetings. Today's a special meeting. Must be twenty-four hour notice to both the legislative body and the media and members of the public. Notice also contains a brief general description of each item to be discussed and no other business can be considered. If it's not on the agenda, you can't talk about it. Emergency situations. There's an earthquake, there's a flood, there's some, you know, civil unrest. There may be an emergency situation that is so disruptive or threatening to the public facilities and then you have to do a one-hour notice to the media and no closed session items can be heard at an emergency meeting. You can have a closed session at a special meeting, but not an emergency meeting. Exceptions.
Can, can you repeat that? You're saying in a special meeting, there is no closed session whatsoever?
No, emergency meeting.
Emergency, okay.
Okay.
I mean, I said a minute, an emergency meeting, there's no closed session.
Right, there's a regular meeting.
Emergency meetings, we've never had one. It's the one that's called within one hour notice.
Oh, with one hour, okay, because we had special meetings, special meetings, you can have closed session.
Right.
That's when we.
Never had an emergency meeting.
The only reason I bring it back is because we had a flood here four years ago and we had a couple of emergency, or not emergency, I should say, special meetings and, and we had a closed session.
Right, and, and again, the closed session is only twenty-four hour notice. Emergency meetings, I don't know any agencies barring a, you know, the Loma Prieta earthquake and things like that where any agency did that, but it was so critical to just convene right away. And those have to be open to the extent that you can even access your facility and things like that. Exceptions to the agenda requirements. So what do you do? It happens every meeting. Member of the public gets up during a public comment period and they make a comment on something not on your agenda for that meeting. What do you do as a chair or supervisor? Even though it's not on the agenda, the chair can make a brief response to a public statement or questions, but they can't discuss it. You can, you can explain to the members of the public that that item isn't on the agenda, that you're not allowed to discuss it, that you can refer them to staff members so that they can have a discussion and get answers to their questions, but you can't discuss it, but you can make a brief response. You can do brief announcements or reports on your own activities during a comment period or something that you think might be public interest. And you can provide references to staff, request staff to report back or using your board rules, discuss about putting a matter on for a future agenda. And we'll get into later how you do that. Further exceptions. There is a limited reason to add an agenda item when something requires an immediate action and the item arose after the agenda. You know, there's that, there's special circumstances in the Brown Act. Although generally, most agencies know it at least twenty-four hours in advance. So they just, you have a regular meeting and then you convene a special meeting to handle that one item. I've actually, I'll defer to Barbara or Ray. I've actually never seen this used where things are so exigent. It's such an emergency that on the night of, or the day of your board meeting, you actually add an item to your agenda.
We had.
I've seen, I've, yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah.
Limited circumstance.
But it's very limited. I could probably count it on one hand.
Yeah, that was the individual that was being transported from, there was one that we had, there was a transportation issue from the jail.
I remember that.
That was the only one I remember in four years.
As you can see.
Oh, go ahead.
But it's just a, a, an exception.
And most of the time, it's, we weren't aware of it until that, you know, basically, and then timing is of the essence. We have to have something executed maybe the next day or something.
The one that I think that was being referenced was when a child that was in dependent care had to be transported out of state and they needed approval to transport them because there was out of state travel.
And we found out that more, we found out during the meeting, actually.
Right.
Where we called.
Yeah.
So there is a, a way to do that. And then there's a process that you can't, you know, two-thirds of the board members present have to add that item to the agenda. Closed sessions. Can you meet outside of a regular meeting with the public? Yes, but only on personnel matters, pending or potential litigation and legal advice, real estate negotiations, lease negotiations or labor negotiations. Very, very limited reasons that you can meet in a closed session. And just because I know the planning commission is on, planning commission has no basis for generally for, unless it's pending litigation, that they have to be updated by the county council's office. Or they're involved in any kind of real estate or lease negotiations. But generally, except for the Board of Supervisors, there's very rare exceptions for any other board or commission to meet in closed session other than the Board of Supervisors.
And there's one or two more that we don't usually use, but like, I think it's claims against, in addition, there's a couple of little minor ones that don't come up very often.
Personnel matters. Appointment, employment, evaluation of performance, discipline or dismissal of one of your employees, your appointees. So that would be the.
Three employees.
Yeah, chief administrative officer, your county council and.
The YAD commissioner. Those are the three, the three that.
So those are the three employees that you get to meet on appointment, employment, evaluation, discipline or dismissal. If it is a other type of employee, that's not in your purview, that's in the CAO's purview and he can bring matters to you, but not necessarily, you know, in, in the same context. Okay, you can consider complaints or charges against one of your appointees, those three employees. And that employee must be given twenty-four hours notice before you meet and the right to hear if there's any charges in open session. And that has happened in a lot of jurisdictions that the, your chief administrative officer or county council or someone takes exception to the board, you know, convening and they want this to be in an open, open matter, not a closed session. And that's their choice. Pending litigation advice from legal counsel. Closed session may be held to receive advice from legal counsel regarding pending litigation where discussion in open session would prejudice, prejudice the agency. Pending litigation is limited to existing litigation. Decision on sometimes if the county wants to initiate litigation. And situations involving significant exposure to litigation where you know ahead of time that something's happened. There's a landslide, there's a serious accident, something that's happened in the county that might involve significant exposure to litigation. And if there is significant exposure to litigation, it has to meet one of these criteria. There's either a claim that's been filed or written, communication threatening litigation. There's been a verbal statement. Somebody stands up in a meeting and says, I'm going to sue the board, I'm going to sue the county, I'm going to sue you because of X, Y or Z. Or that the county is aware that there's facts and circumstances that you can articulate that might result in litigation that you've learned. So there are still some limitations on litigation about meeting in closed session. And conceivably, if it's appropriate, the county council could meet with the planning commission in closed session on pending litigation. If they thought that the threats were made related to one of their actions. Real estate negotiations. Everybody's aware that if the county is negotiating for the sale or purchase or lease of, of real property or any kind of an exchange that makes sense. You don't want to have to tip your hand. You'd be in an unequal bargaining position, negotiating position, if you couldn't meet in closed session. But what's not all known is that you do have to disclose what the parcel is you're meeting about. You can't just meet and put on the agenda that you want to meet about real estate negotiations without identifying the, the location of the property. So if you, you are, may tip your hand if it's not available, but you think it's going to be available and you want to be poised and ready to react, you still have to list that parcel. You have to let the public know that you're at least going to meet on a, a specific address. The other thing is that you can only talk about price and terms of that negotiation. All the other land use matters about what you might do with that parcel or housing or any of those other considerations aren't part of the closed session. Labor negotiations, that's probably going to be one of your more frequent reasons to, not frequent, but, but regular reasons to meet in closed session. You can meet in closed session with the agency's representative. That may be a lawyer, that may be your bargainer, your, your negotiator. In labor negotiations with both represented and unrepresented. So your union and your unrepresented employees, groups, you can meet to discuss labor negotiations. Questions? And again, prior to the open session, oh, before you go into closed session, you have to engage in an open session to identify who's, who the agency, who the Board of Supervisor, who the county's representative is. Okay. How should closed sessions be handled? Do you have a very capable and competent county council that will guide you in this? You have to follow the statutory language. There is what's called safe harbor provisions. In the Brown Act, the language about how you list a closed session item is in the statutory language in, in the California code. And if you follow that language, then it is presumed that you have, you know, adequately disclosed it. But, so you follow the statutory language about how you identify a closed session. And then you announce. and then, um, you announce to the public that you're going to convene in closed session. And you can only have the board of supervisors, your attorney, your C A O, and any other appropriate attendee in closed session. If it's a litigation matter involving the, you know, um, the sheriffs, then maybe somebody's, a representative is in there. Ray or Barbara, I'm gonna defer to you. Do you usually have staff in closed sessions?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay.
With relevant, um, relevant staff on closed sessions.
That are relevant to that issue.
To that issue.
Right, okay. And the other key thing that your county council or your, will work with your board chair, there is some required reporting following a closed session to let the public know whether you took action or no action, reportable action was taken. So what happens as you, as a board of supervisor, can you talk about what happens in a closed session? The answer is no. No disclosure of confidential closed session information. As much as you want to inform the public, until the board of supervisors decides that that information is public, individually, you cannot disclose what happens in a closed session, who says what, who, who, you know, um, on a labor negotiation, who gave a thumbs up or a thumbs down, you know, voted for, you know, a certain provision. And there are penalties that for disclosure, um, someone can not only sue the county, but an individual board of supervisor for a breach of the confidentiality. There can also be referrals to grand juries for those types of violations. And I don't mean to make light of it, I mean, that's a serious issue that you wanna avoid.
Let me just jump in on that.
Sure.
Closed session is something extremely serious, and the five members that, uh, we have on this board, I have trust, faith, that we will not breach confidentiality, and to me, that's everything. I do not ever want to hear of anyone ever speaking about something that happened in closed session out in the public, because to me, that just, it eliminates all the trust we have with each other. And that's probably one of the most important things, 'cause in closed session, we do say things that, uh, that are meant for us to make appropriate decisions. So that's just, I wanna make sure it is, it's extremely important, and it is, uh, you know, I'm happy that there is a penalty that you're saying that could be, can transpire if, uh, that confidentiality was, was broken.
I had a question on that also. I had put in my notes here, consequence of disclosure, and so I appreciate that. So how would the procedure happen if, in the event, one of us inadvertently, intentionally or otherwise, went ahead and disclosed something in, from the closed session, um, and it had a m- material impact on the community? How would you be doing, dealing with that?
Do you want me to answer? I think it's a, uh, this is my thought, that it's appropriate for it to be addressed at the board level, not necessarily brought up by staff, so I think that the chair could agendize that. Um, there's various different, um, remedies, I mean, the board could discuss whether or not there should be a referral, whether there should be a censor, whether there should be just public criticism, but that would probably happen at the board level to, um, talk about that issue.
Okay.
A question, what happens if, um, a member of the public, you know, know, they may not know what's gonna happen, but they know there's something that's going to go into a closed session? And they, you know, they call you or whatever, and they, and they comment, or they give you input, or what, is that, I mean, should you not even listen? Uh, I mean, obviously, you can't talk about anything that takes place, but I'm just curious.
You can always listen to your constituents, and your, your member of the public can always contact you. Your, your decision, what kinda input you want, and what kinda meetings and calls you wanna take, um, people can email you. But, you know, you can't confirm or deny anything other than what was on the agenda, that there was a closed session about labor negotiations or a real estate, um, transaction. It, it is a slippery slope, and, and as Supervisor Medina says, it goes to the heart of the trust for, uh, an, an elected body. So not only is it may subject you, there can be referrals to the district attorney's office for criminal penalties, and that can be done by, you know, your board, like, um, or a member of the public or staff, um, as uncomfortable as that could be. And, um, and then there can be civil actions to, um, for an injunction to stop the action. Somebody that is somehow impacted it could, uh, sue the county and the, and the individual board member who allegedly vi- conducted the violation, um, to invalidate the actions or mandate corrections and things like that. And again, you're gonna learn from your county council and C A O, that every time that the county's involved in, um, litigation matters is, it always is gonna be a way imbalance of what the court costs an attorney's fees and, you know, what that's gonna mean to the county coffers, so.
Back to Superintendent Tiffany's, um, um, issue, the board, uh, when it gets into labor negotiations, although each board member can meet with the labor unions, the board, you know, may at some point decide whether or not they want individual board members to, to meet, or whether or not they want more, um, of the negotiations to go through the negotiator, and, you know, that, that set a future point in time, and, uh, it can be handled different ways.
Historically, the, I think the board has taken on the, the point to, to obviously meet with anybody, everybody, dur- during normal times, right? Normal. But once we s- get into negotiations in the table, that's when usually the board members pull back a little bit, because that can, that's a slippery slope, you know? There can be a divulging of information, it becomes a little bit, um, the increase or the, the possibility of, of, um, of direct dealing or other things can come up, which I think is one of the reasons why historically, board members have pulled back a little bit on communication and allowed our, our labor teams to do the, the negotiations at that point with the board's direction.
But like, for example, um, I mean, I'll just use one that I'm aware of, uh, is, well, maybe I won't, maybe I won't, um, 'cause it's, it's under closed sessions, I don't even know that, I wouldn't even bring it up. Let me ask a totally different question, uh, but related to closed session. So you go into a closed session, uh, let's say, you know, on Tuesday here, we, where there's gonna be closed session. We ju- we, we just got done talking about a hot issue. We go in the closed session, I'm sure that you have to be very careful that you don't carry on some kinda conversation about an unrelated item that's not a closed session item, but I can see that that, you know, potentially happens if, if there's a hot issue, I, I just, I'm curious to touch on that. I assume you have to be very careful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just can't, you can't do it, and, um, when you go back there, you can only meet regarding the items that are on that agenda.
Yeah.
And, and you can be assured that staff's gonna remind you of that during your closed session if you get off topic and, and, and go beyond the close, well, most, I mean, most likely, I mean, you're gonna be reminded of what the constraints are, um, during your closed session. You, e- e- the five of you won't be meeting by yourselves, you're always gonna have your attorney or C A O or somebody in that closed session with you that's gonna, um, be familiar with the, the sideboards on, on what you can and can't talk about.
Right, yeah.
Okay?
So, uh, just, uh, just, I'm not sure, I just wanted to take a quick poll with the board. Did you guys wanna take a five-minute recess, or do you wanna just continue on?
I don't mind continuing on, 'cause I took a ladies' break, but I would like to have the heater on. I'm freezing, my fingers are freezing.
Yeah, the other.
It's not in the budget, sorry.
Are you referring to the restroom, or? Yeah, restroom break. Let's just do a five-minute recess for, uh, bathroom break. Yeah.
I have a sweater in the car, it doesn't match with what I'm wearing, but I have to put it on.
It's not in the budget already, I told you. It's not in the budget.
Freeze.
Is there a little hot left here?
I'm just gonna.
I'm gonna go bring you down a blanket myself.
All right, I'd like to go ahead and reconvene the meeting, our training session. You might be able to sit down. Yeah, no, I don't have them. It's all good. It's all good. Real quick, I.
That's cool.
All right, so I want to go ahead and reconvene. And one of the things I'd like to highlight as a reference point for a future chair or vice chair is normally questions, so I know that there was some questions there. Since the topic is such a long topic, I think what I'm going to do on this is go ahead and ask maybe some questions from the outside. I know there's some planning commissioners on, I think that there's some relevant probably questions from them. I think that they would like to partake, and I know that there were some hands being raised online. So with that, I'd like you to turn to the rules and procedures of the Board of Supervisors, County San Benito PDF file. And in there, there is a public input section that you can look at. Maybe you can look at your convenience later, we can talk about it a little bit more on my part. But just keep in mind that, you know, normally you can ask the public for some input. Normally it's three minutes, that's been historically what we have done and what we have documented. There is also, just an FYI, there is also a public, a public comment section when it comes to the public comments within the board meetings right before the department head announcement. So that whole section is an area that you can actually read off if you like and defines, you know, the public comment for you. So when you actually are facilitating the meeting.
On public comment, I was watching, I think it was Orange County or another board meeting, and they limit public comment to three minutes, or there was another one that if it's on the same subject over some timeframe. Is that common, and do we, have we ever instituted that?
No, we've never instituted that, I have seen it. So what you're talking about is that each agenda item will be limited to like, let's say thirty minutes, ten, ten public comments. I haven't seen that as common, but I have noticed that.
And so that can be, oh, go ahead, sorry.
What I personally like instead of that item is, I also have seen another variant of that, that people are limited to a total of fifteen minutes public comment throughout the whole day, so that they can talk three minutes on five different agenda items. But if they are going to talk on eight different agenda items, then they have to reduce their time limit on each agenda item, which is another variant, but we have not capped.
Yeah, I just.
Or considered capping.
We can talk about that later on, because personally, I mean, I'll give you mine, is I think it's, you know, you're muffling the.
The public.
The public.
Yeah.
That's just me, that's.
And I think, yeah, and I, go ahead.
I'm sorry, let's say that you have, I think it's fair, like on a big item, if there's going to be a hundred members of the public that want to comment, the most, the way that I would do it is to reduce the time limit from three minutes to two minutes. For example, if you have a hundred people that are in the audience that want to speak.
And we legally have the authority to do that?
Yes, you can do that.
All right, so with that being said, thank you for the comment. No, I know, it's great, and this is what this is about today, it's about asking questions. And I think, you know, there's a lot of potentially, you know, looking at these rules, these rules and procedures, and maybe adjusting them later, and you know, I think at the end of the day, the board historically has wanted input from the public, so they've never really put caps on some of these things. I think some jurisdictions that are really large, maybe the Riverside Counties and the really, really large counties that maybe have a lot of input, I mean, they can be there for two days straight taking comments. So I think that's the reason why they put in some of these other caps, to be able to limit that. So it's just, you know, for us, I think it's been working well the way, the way we have it. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and open up the Zoom or in public here for open comments, so I'd like to pass this to Gracie.
Members of the public who wish to speak, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. Elia, please state your full name for the record, you will have three minutes.
So you had up there that it said conflict of interest, and I'm driving, so I hope y'all can hear me well. My question with regards to your title of conflict of interest, is it a conflict of interest for a supervisor to uphold his or her oath, which is to, you know, uphold whatever, whatever laws are out there? Because we, they are legislative, and there is a mandate by the governor. So is there, is it a conflict of interest for that supervisor, under his or her title as a supervisor, to notice, to give notice to the public not to follow that mandate? Thank you.
I don't know that we're going to.
Any other questions? Yeah, we may, we may go back and maybe tally these up and maybe respond to them in a bit. Go ahead, go ahead.
We have no more speakers via Zoom at this time.
Okay, I don't know if you want to comment on that item or any.
Or do you want to do the public presentation on conflict of interest first?
Conflicts of interest, as I tee it up, is going to be the ethics, laws and principles regarding when a supervisor or a planning commission member can participate. It won't address the issue that the speaker just asked, I'll defer to staff at either this time or a later time. That's a different question about not covered under the conflicts of interest.
We can, we can cover that after, if you want, just continue on, but well, I'd like to, I'd like to respond to that if we can. And if we have to respond at a later date, we can do that as well on Tuesday.
Okay, conflicts of interest, so all of you that are sitting up here got elected at some point in time, and you've all had some exposure to the concept of conflicts of interest and the rules under state law. These are all state law rules. And this is going to be more as to your role now, not as a candidate, but now as an elected official. Stop me if you've got questions, I'm going to run through this, it's important. I think Ray's going to chime in on a number of these things, and we'll, because it's a lot of detail. Public office is a position of trust, and under California law, public officials and employees must act with integrity, fairness, accountability and honesty. We all talked about under the Brown Act that you have to be open and transparent. Under California law on conflicts of interest, you have to show integrity, fairness, accountability and honesty. And those are statutorily based, they're based on regulations at the state level from the, and from the Fair Political Practice Commission, from Attorney General Opinions in Cases, and the principles are that you have to act no personal gain. Your actions can't be for the benefit of you, your business, or, you know, family members. It has to be for the benefit of the public, no personal advantages or perks. You used to read those stories back in the day about elected officials or judges going golfing on somebody else's dime and things like that. And again, it has to be that in your role as an elected or appointed official, that you're not taking action for your own personal advantage, has to be a fair process. And again, we've talked all morning about government transparency, open, available to the public, participatory by the public. Okay, the laws we're talking about now are a minimum standard. It's the floor, lots of agencies have a higher bar, that's up to your board and your, your county. But these are the minimum standards, not the maximum. And one of the questions that you'll want to ask yourself all along in this section is the same thing that Supervisor Medina said before, is what's it going to look like if your comments or actions show up in, you know, the newspaper or the public or on social media or somehow is, does it pass the smell test? How will my actions be perceived by the public? Even if you are allowed to do it, is it the right thing to do? So again, this is, there are minimum standards, and then there are going to be how you as individual elected officials apply that to your own, own position. These are the mandatory minimum standards. Public official may not make, participate in making, or in any way use the office or the position to influence a governmental decision in which you know that you, or should know that you have a financial interest. And again, we'll break these down one by one, so just bear with me as I, as I run through this. Reasonable foreseeability, we'll, we'll talk about what that means, that the decision will have a material financial effect different than the effect on the general public, that you as an elected official or appointed official, like a planning commissioner, that it's either going to affect you, your immediate family, or your specific economic interests. And that's a financial interest, so let's break it down. Fair Political Practice Commission currently has a four-part test. And I will tell you that if you've ever been on a board or commission before, either in this county or anywhere else, the FPPC, as it's referred to, often changes that test. And we'll go back through, Barbara asked me a question just the other day about one of the prior tests that they used to use. So throughout your election and, or appointment for the planning commissioners, these rules may change. They may be modified, massaged in any way, they're not set in standard, they evolved, just like the Brown Act has evolved into social media arena. Okay, what does it mean to be reasonably foreseeable that, that a government decision, whether it's a legislative act, you're considering an ordinance banning something or, or allowing something, or a quasi judicial act to approve a permit or a, or a development project? Is it reasonably foreseeable that your decision would have a financial effect on, and on any of your financial interests? So what does the FPPC, what does the state look like? Foreseeability, you look at, is it possible? And it's not only a profit, you have to say, is there any economic change? Is it realistic possibility, is it more than probable that a position that you take could benefit or harm you or your family members and your, your economic interests? The FPPC, the state law says that it's presumed that there's a financial effect. It's foreseeable if the financial interest is explicitly involved in the decision. And we'll talk about how that applies to approving a contract or land use entitlements. Okay, what's a financial interest? Real property, and that now includes leases, so it's not just, it didn't used to, but now it's ownership and an interest in real property, business investments, gift, there are gift limits. And I know you probably looked at that when you ran your own candidacies. You look at what your sources of income are and what that personal financial effect may be. One of the steps that the FPPC looks at, and part of the analysis that you would look at in trying to determine if you had a conflict, is whether you have a direct or indirect investment of two thousand dollars or more in a fair market value in either a lease, a long-term lease, or real property located on property within your jurisdiction. So again, the real property that's subject for Board of Supervisors or Planning Commission is, is the property within San Benito County. Nobody cares, you know, it's not an issue if you've got property elsewhere in the state or out of state. It's what's your financial in, interest in property within the confines of County of San Benito? What are your investments? And investments include investments of a spouse or a domestic partner that are registered under state law. And what's your position in a business entity if you have a ten percent or greater interest in it? So it's not just that you own a business, but even if you only have a ten percent interest in a business, and it might be a family business or something like that, you have to look at those indirect investments as well. So any business doing business in the jurisdiction, and again, all of this is premised on your activities within the confines of the County of San Benito. Has a direct or indirect investment worth two thousand dollars or more, and, or, it's an or, not an and, you're a director, an officer, a partner, a trustee, might even be just a management employee or holds a management position in a company. If you are, benefit in your income, in your company, you, you hold a position of such trust that your decisions on the Board of Supervisors might impact the company that you work for, even if you're just an employee or a management employee, or even if you're not an owner, you might have to look at that as well. Other indirect investments is source of gifts of, the new gift limit in California for elected officials are five hundred or twenty dollars or more in a twelve-month period prior to the decision. So you have to look at that as well, and we'll talk about gift limits. These are just sort of your, your, your investment categories. Any source of income, five hundred dollars or more provided to or promised to the official in the twelve months prior to the decision. You're going to see that that may come into play is if you are on some sort of commission. Lots, we've had real estate agents, mortgage brokers, things that people who are in elected positions that get compensated by commission, and that five hundred dollars will trigger a commission. So if you're in one of those industries, that's worth looking at and talking to County Council staff to help you analyze these kinds of potential conflicts, economic conflicts. You also have an economic interest in a government decision if you or your immediate family's personal expenses, incomes, assets or liabilities are likely to go up or down by a measurable amount as a result of your decision. So one of the things that most people does, do the analysis is they say, well, I'm not going to have any economic gain, I'm going to have a loss so I can participate. Under the rules in California, if you or your immediate family would suffer an economic loss by a measurable amount, and again, there's those standards, it's for each category, you have to analyze that as well. An immediate family in California is defined as spouse-dependent, spouse-dependent children, and a spouse includes a registered domestic partner. So is the foreseeable financial effect material? So what's the threshold? You, you already know it's a complex issue. You have to look at each of those levels. Two thousand for real property, ten percent interest in a company, two thousand dollars for a business interest, five hundred dollar, five hundred and twenty dollars, it's a gift. So there's different categories that you have to do the analysis for. And a key issue in deciding on whether you have a conflict or not, to be able to decide or participate in a project, in a decision, would be what's your financial in, interest? And the next step, step three is, can you show that this material, once you've decided that there is a financial interest? And then step two, it's a material financial interest. Step three is, is your position different from the general public? If you're deciding whether to allocate funds to a roadway project or street improvement project in the county, and it's in your neighborhood, you might have a material financial effect, it might impact the value of your property if you're an owner or have a long-term lease on a residential or business property. If, if that roadway project, that street improvement project is in ten locations or it's a capital improvement project for the entire county, and you're just going to be allocating who goes first, and you're all going to have your roads improved, then maybe the analysis is that you're no different than from the significant segment of the public, you stand in the same shoes as your neighbor in District Four or District Two or whatever, then you may be able to participate. And you also have to look at whether your financial interest, whether it's unique or not unique compared to this significant segment of the public. Do you own all the property in an area? Do you own just one percent of the property in the area? So these are questions, and then we'll talk about how you actually get those answers, questions answered. The most important thing I think I want you to take away from, from this whole discussion, and I think what staff is going to want you to take away is for your own protection, is after you go through the three-step analysis under the Fair Political Practice Commission, and it's been determined that you have a conflict of interest, and it doesn't appear that there's any exception or exemption, you, not only can you not make, sit as a supervisor and participate in that decision, you can't make the decision, you can't participate in making the decision, but you can't use your position to try and influence that decision. So that may mean, getting back to the discussion about who and when you can talk to. If you can't participate because you've got a conflict of interest, a financial conflict of interest, not only can you not make the decision, you can't sit and vote on it, you can't participate, so you can't be up on the dais having, engaging in discussions, but even before it comes to the board. to the board, you can't be the leader of some neighborhood group and be feeding them information, or, or, or meeting with your other board members trying to sway their position when you have a financial economic interest in the outcome of the decision. So it's a multi-step consideration, but, but again, I think everybody gets that you can't participate, you can't be in the discussion, you can't, you can't vote on it, but keep in mind, you can't do anything to further or influence that decision that comes before you. So how that happens on step four is, once you've, I, I know, you don't even know if you have an economic interest, I'm jumping to, let's presume you do. You have to abstain from any participation or any influence in that decision. And then what the rule has always been is, let's say that you can't participate in a decision because you have a conflict of, a financial conflict of interest. You have to state that economic interest. It's not enough to just say, I'm not going to be participating in item two on the agenda because I have an economic interest in this project. You have to say, I own property, I have a 10% interest in a business, or whatever the determination of your, your economic interest, you have to disclose that on the record at a meeting before the item is heard. And that would be true of some of your staff members, like your county council, or your chief administrative officer, or your ag commissioner, would be in that same position. And, and anyone in the county who manages public investments, and you have to actually step off the dais and leave the room. There's all these cases about, back in the day when this statute became relevant and adopted by the legislature, that there was concern that if you stayed in the room, somehow you were going to signal either intentionally or inadvertently to your fellow board members and somehow influence their decision. You're going to sigh, you're going to, you know, cross your arms, you're going to do something physical to somehow influence them while they're on the dais having this discussion. The new rule as of, in 2021, that was adopted in the last legislative session, says that if you have a conflict of interest and you are, must recuse yourself, this is misleading, you actually have to recuse yourself from any participation. Let's say the item is the first agenda item, and you talk to Ray and you say, you know, I can't participate in that first agenda item, I'm going to come an hour later to the meeting because I, I'll just come late to the meeting and I won't be there for that agenda item. Now, under the new rules, that when you come into the room, even if it's, let's say that Supervisor Tiffany, you have a conflict of interest, you can't participate in item number one on the agenda, and you decide to not, since you can't participate, you're not even going to be here for the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're not going to come to the board meeting until after that, or you're not going to log on on Zoom until after that item has been heard. Now, when you come onto the dais and you start your participation, you can no longer avoid stating your conflict of interest. Now you have to say, oh, and before we move on to item, agenda two, I'm now participating in the, in the rest of the agenda, but I wasn't present for agenda item number one because I had a conflict of interest, and here was my economic interest in that. You used to be able to avoid that by just not being in the room and not being, or if, if you're absent from a meeting, you don't have to, like the, the next meeting, you don't have to do that, but if you're going to participate in part of the agenda, but not all of the agenda, you at some point in time have to state your conflict of interest on the rule. And that is new. And you'll work with county council about, and, and, and the chief administrative officer about how that gets woven into the agenda process, because that will be a, a new, new part of the 2021 requirements. Okay. Consequences of participation. If you've wrongfully participated in a decision in which you had a conflict, that agency decision may be invalidated. If your, if your failure to disclose, and it was intentional to not disclose and recuse yourself, you could be prosecuted, you could face civil penalties, and it could result in a removal from office. Public generally exception, we talked about that a little bit, and the new requirements are, there, there's a test for, are you in the same shoes as everyone else? Do you sit in that same position as all of the other board members, or all of the other community members? And, and even if you had a financial interest, you might be able to participate. Rule of necessity, there's a, an exception in law is, let's say three supervisors have a conflict on the same project. There is a process by which, members that have a conflict disclose the conflict because you need a quorum to vote on an item, might have an opportunity, despite their conflict, to participate, and then there's special rules on how you do that.
I have a question.
Sure.
So isn't there also something in regards, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of property, in terms of distance from, let's say, home, and I'm thinking specifically-
The 500-foot rule.
500 feet, so, you know, and again, example, I live at a, okay, go ahead.
So let me jump in, that's what Barbara and I were talking about. The, the land use rule always was for conflicts of interest, 500 feet. And then it was like 300 feet, and then it was inside the jurisdiction, outside the jurisdiction, whatever. The FPPC now is looking at a value of the property, it, it's just this four-step process, whether it is a, a land use decision about where your property is, it's not where your property is, it's that you have this financial interest of $2,000 or more fair market value in a property that the decision may affect. So they don't even look at whether you're 300 feet, 500 feet, or anything, it's totally on, if you own property with a value of $2,000 or more in a lease or a real property, and, and, and there is a foreseeable material impact to your property, up or down, related to this decision, then you're going to be conflicted out of participating. So it's no longer a firm, but most jurisdictions, and I don't know what you guys are doing, and certainly with the Planning Commission, will usually map out and kind of tell you where you are, because it may be that, here, here's an example of, of where you might look beyond 500, or, and why that isn't the current standard. If a county is building some sort of stadium, performing arts center, something that's significant value to the community, it may be that your property is 1,000, 1,000 feet away, but if you're in that direct traffic flow to that new community center, or some, something that's up for approval, that may have an impact on your property, whether you're 300, 500, or 1,000 feet away. So it really looks at what your economic interest, your foreseeability, and is a reasonable belief that you might have an economic interest. So here's what happens in the day-to-day. You get your agenda packet, and you start reading through it, and you go through all of these items. And it is incumbent on each elected and appointed official, as you go through your agenda packet, or you get information about items that may come before you, to really think about, wow, do I have a real property interest? Does my immediate family have an interest? Do I have an investment interest? Or a, a real property, business investment, a source of income, my employment, or some other personal financial effect, gain or loss in, in this matter? Then, for your own protection, that's when you contact the staff, you contact the, you contact Ray, you contact Barbara and say, I don't know either, I do have a conflict, because you just know you do, because you've gone through this analysis yourself, or you contact staff and say, I need help, do you think I have a conflict? Can we go through the information? And generally, at that level, you can decide whether you do or don't have a conflict. Occasionally, a supervisor, or even a planning commissioner, will say, I know this is what you're telling me, I have a conflict, but I think I can participate, and I, I, I shouldn't have a conflict. And there is a process that either the county council, or you can ask the Fair Political Practice Commission for a written opinion about whether you do or don't have a conflict of interest under, under the state law. You can also get informal advice from the FPPC, but that won't protect you or binding if there's a challenge. So there's different levels of ways to get help on whether or not you have a conflict of interest. I know this sounds complicated, but honestly, most elected officials know when they have a financial interest in a project or not. And it might not even be a project, it might be a legislative act, it might be an ordinance that either allows something, as counties and cities were trying to work on cannabis issues, you know, if a supervisor had some sort of an interest in a property that was being viewed for potential growth or sale of cannabis product, products, or an interest in a business, then even on the legislative act, you may or may not be able to participate. And, and generally, I think it's rare that an elected or appointed official, sometimes, I mean, there are circumstances in a meeting where you're going to say, oh my gosh, as I listen to things, you realize that you didn't really think about that before? That's a time to ask for a break and talk to, you know, your, your, you know, appointees, and figure out whether or not you can or can't participate. So there's also a difference, what financial interest, if you do have one, it's mandatory, you may not participate. It's a state statute, there are ramifications if you do participate. And that's what's called a recusal, you have to recuse yourself, you have to not participate, make or participate or influence the decision at all, you step off the dais, you step off the room. What happens if you just don't want to participate? Is that the same thing? That's called an abstention. And lots of board policies have direction on abstentions, and I'm going to defer to Ray, but most jurisdictions don't favor abstentions. I mean, you're, you were elected to participate, that's a personal decision, you may have a reason, you don't have to state your reason for abstaining, but generally, that is not a favored approach for most elected officials, because you want to participate, your constituents want you to participate, and you, when elected or appointed, agreed to participate. Ray, anything particular in-
About that, yeah, and so in your rules and procedures item, you'll notice that there is an actual call-out of that under M for abstentions. I think, I think just to note, I think what Judith's saying is absolutely true. Most of the time, though, the board members are always there, unless something, I, I think I've seen that once, maybe, maybe two times since I've been here, someone abstaining, but for the most part, I think your role as a supervisor is to partake and be a part of the process, and so, but there is, there is a note there with regards to the abstention. Yeah, and it's, it's talking about the vote and the affirmation of the vote itself as well, so, in that particular item, so, that, that's it, I just, I don't know if that is clear, it doesn't-
It doesn't preclude them from doing an abstention if they want to, though.
That's right, that's right.
And if you're not prepared, or you had some extenuating circumstance, and you weren't able to participate because you needed to, you know, site visit, do something before, you know, I mean, there's reasons to, for an abstention, it's just not the favored approach. But there is a difference between an abstention, which is voluntary, and a recusal, which is mandatory. And, and I don't expect any of you to walk away saying, oh my gosh, I know all these rules today on this. All we want you to walk away with is the threshold. Do you have a business investment that's over $2,000? Do you have real property or a leasehold interest over $2,000? Is your source of income greater than $500? Do you have an interest in a business entity, or are you a key employee such that your business might, or employer might be impacted by this decision? Did you receive any gifts in excess of the gift amount? And do you have any, or your spouse or dependent children have any of these kinds of interests in, in investment, things like that? So what that, the point of this, this section is to just clue you in that these are questions you should be asking yourself as you're going through your agenda packet, or as items come to your attention from your community members, that they would like you to consider these items. The question will be early on, you know, don't wait until the meeting, because again, you can't influence a decision, so you don't want to figure out at the 11th hour that you had a conflict, never should have been having these conversations, advocating one way or the other. The sooner you know that you have a conflict of interest, the easier it will be for you to advise your constituents, advise staff, that you're not going to be able to participate in any way.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
One is a little clarification on the public exception. Let's say you own a home in a, in a neighborhood, and there's going to be, you know, a major road work that's going to be done, that's going to not specifically affect your, your home, but it will be among, you know, a whole bunch of homes that are going to be positively impacted. Is that a public exception, or because it's, it's, you know, it's in your specific area and not necessarily going to be in other parts of the county, that would be an area that you would have to look at as potential conflict of interest?
And here we go again, it depends, and it's going to be fact-specific, and what the-
That'd be something I probably would just raise the issue-
Right.
And, and ask the question.
Right, but, but again, I think that, having worked with elected and appointed officials for so many years, I raised that as an example, because we've had that happen, and it was a real surprise to everyone, because most counties and cities approve a capital improvement program, certain amount of dollars allocated for a infrastructure. And this, and, and the question became is, could this council member even participate in the infrastructure budget approval when such a significant part of that was for street improvements in a particular neighborhood in which he owned property? And so I raised those kinds of issues more as a heads-up, that you should be thinking as you review items about whether or not, I, be, be clear about what your sources of income are, your investments and your economic interests and things like that, to at least ask the question. There's no harm in asking the question and contacting the county administrative officer or the county council and having that discussion, or for planning commissioners, you know, contacting, you know, their, their planner to at least open that discussion to figure out where you are. And, and again, it, it is a conversation, but the sooner you have the conversation, if you do need an opinion from the FPPC, that takes time, and it may limit your ability to participate if you haven't seen that in advance. Like if you know a big project's coming up- Like if you know a big project's coming up and you want a ruling from the Fair Political Practice Commission, you're gonna wanna work with county council's office early to be sure that there's adequate time to get the information to FPPC and get an opinion letter back about whether you can or can't participate.
Yeah, the other thing I was gonna add to that is regards to roads, more specific to your question. Um, in, in years past, we've been, uh, rolling out road projects. Um, and so if we know in advance or we can work with you, if there's something that does really affect your property, we have so many other roads that are being worked on, we could probably isolate that out and address it accordingly, uh, where you still can address the rest of the county. If it does have a direct impact with you, obviously we have to go through that, but. So there's, um, notifying county council, myself in advance really would help us formulate the agenda as well. So you could, um, remove yourself, um, from everything else, or remove yourself from that particular item and not everything else, so.
Right, okay.
So there's, let me just ta, uh, tag on, there is a specific provision in, in the code that, um, an agency can segment a decision. So you could, um, recuse yourself from a portion of the item that would impact you if staff knows ahead of time to separate it out and becomes like an agenda item A and B on a roadwork project or infrastructure or something like that. And, um, as long as they're not, you know, tied like, you're not horse trading, like your project that you're interested in doesn't get funding or gets funding if they don't approve something else. But there is a way to segment, um, agenda items so that it would allow the maximum participation by, by supervisors.
Okay. The, the, the other question, totally unrelated, is I gather that just, um, as if you own property outside of your jurisdiction, it's not a concern, but also, let's say, stock investments and things like that. Um, I guess there could be conceivably, uh, a, a stock you own that somehow is tied to the, to your jurisdiction.
Sure.
But on, in a general sense, am I right in thinking, you know, that's not something that is a conflict for just national stocks?
It depends on who you are and where you are in, in, and, and what companies. If you're, you live in Sunnyvale or, if you're an elected official in Sunnyvale or Mountain View and you own Google or Apple stock or Cupertino, you know, just to the north of you, that matters on a day-to-day basis for your elected and appointed officials. And that is a significant, um, source of conflicts of interest for a lot of elected officials all up and down the Bay Area because there's so many big corporations that are traded, um, on, on the exchange. So it depends on who and what you've invested on in your jurisdiction. Um, so I would normally say, yeah, you're probably right. If you own, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, a blended, it's a mutual fund, you don't, um, control it, you don't, you know, trade it, whatever. But you do at least have to stop and ask the question. And if there is a significant business in, in located, you know, or, um, does business in your county and you own stock, at least tee up the question to, to county council or the CAO.
Yeah, I'm not, I could be wrong, I'm not aware of any publicly traded company that has headquarters in San Diego County. But, um, obviously, people are commuting up into Santa Clara County and we're, you know, I might own Google or some stock in Microsoft. I don't, I don't know if that's, seems a bit of a stretch, but I was just curious about that.
Yeah.
I, I, I tend to agree with Judith. I think that's, I mean, I think if there's anything specific, you probably, it'd probably be best to discuss that. Um, but I think in general, you're probably right, us being in Hollister, there's not a lot, um, of trading, you know. Um, but there are some companies that are, are traded on the market, so, you know, obviously. I think we just need to be mindful of that, if, you know. And I, and I would, I would even caution too, if there's suppliers for some of those companies, just in the abundance of caution too, that, um, you might wanna be cognizant of. Obviously, we'd have to talk about that in depth, but that could be a possibility too.
So we've just gone through your conflicts of interest and economic interest, your financial interest. And now there is a specific code section in California law, which is called 1090, it's government code 1090. And there's a basic rule that if a public official or an employee has a financial interest, um, in a contract, you cannot, not only can you not participate, but the agency can't participate. So you see this a lot on like, supply contracts. If you're the sole, you own a paper business, you own a computer business in your jurisdiction, um, there are strict limitations about whether the county can contract with you at all. Not only can you not participate, but that whole contract, the board probably, you know, can't make that contract. There are some exceptions if you are like the only supplier or of, of an item. Or you are the only contractor that could do the work. Um, you are, it is an emergency, and you are the only business that can provide those services to the county. But generally, um, if you have a financial interest in a contract in which the county is coming before you that you're going to, um, you know, have to approve or not approve, not only do you need to disclose that to staff early and often because it's likely that no one can, that the county can't make that contract. So, and if it happens, and I ha, I, I, I mean, there's lots of, lots of circumstances where it, it has happened in other jurisdictions where you enter into a contract and then realize that somebody had an economic interest, that contract's void. Um, and there may be, you know, monetary penalties to the county, um, because they have to terminate that contract.
And, I mean, I could say that there's, well, yeah, that's a very serious, um, very serious issue is to have those contracts that there are self, self, it's basically self-dealing.
So again, you have to look at your investments, your ownership in property, your, mostly your business dealings, what's your status in a company? Um, are, 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 you know, what's your sources of income? Um, and if you have an economic interest, um, that's something that you have to let everyone know early. Um, and if there is a contract that doesn't come before the board of supervisors, but you know that it's going through your company, then you still have an obligation. Um, even if it's not, if, even if it's in the CAO or staff level approval, you still have to alert the, the senior staff that you've, that there's this conflict. Because, um, it's usually only applies to contracts that the board approves or not approves, but there's a certain level of contracts that you never see. But if you're in a, a company, a key employee, an owner, or some business interest, and you know that there, you're talking, that the county's considering, um, that contract, you have an obligation to, to speak up and, and notify everybody of that conflict. Um, okay. Again, contract can be void. Um, you, if, if you made any profits from that contract, you personally have to forfeit it. And there can be violations and sanctions against you for that on a 1090. And it comes back, all of this is common sense and common law. As an elected official, you have that duty of loyalty to the public. And if you think that you have any interest in something that interferes with your, the best interests of the public, that it benefits you or your family members, you have to avoid participating. Even if there's no statutory construction, you still have to identify it. Um, and that goes along with that first concept of, as a public official, you owe that duty of loyalty, honesty, and integrity to, you know, the community. Okay, questions? Okay, I'm gonna run through this, but it's something that we've touched on before is, um, and it comes up with conflicts of interest, but more common law conflicts and fair process. The public is entitled to fair consideration of all items that come before you. And you've heard today that we've talked about legislative items like an ordinance or a resolution, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, um, where you either allow something, not allow something, take some sort of an action, or an actual, um, permit, uh, uh, land use approval. But in any way, the, the public is entitled to a fair process. And if you've got a conflict of interest that you failed to disclose, then, um, it's, puts the county and you personally at risk for failure to disclose that because ultimately, there may be a determination that, that you had some sort of a, um, economic interest, the failure to disclose it. And, um, again, does it pass the smell test? You never should have participated in the decision because it benefited you personally. So those are things that you as a elected or appointed official have to be asking yourself is, you know, is it fair? Um, do I have a conflict? Do I have, we'll get a little bit into bias or prejudice of a decision. Um, and those are just, you know, the general questions that you need to be asking yourself. And one of those things that I wanna give you the example is, most elected appoint, uh, officials and many appointed officials come to their role and their, and their duties because they're really passionate about their community. And sometimes you're passionate about one issue. And that was your platform during your, your election or, um, appointment to some, uh, commission or committee. And there's always the question is, um, when can you participate? Have you gone too far in your commitment? Give you an example. Planning commissioner, um, member of the public, objects to a neighbor's project. And the, um, and, and appeals decisions to the planning commission, appeals decisions to the, um, to the board of supervisors or a council. And is really passionate because their neighbor's building something that they don't want and they object to the project. Fast forward a couple months, planning commission appointment, or planning commission position comes open, that individual, um, applies for the planning commission and is appointed to a planning commissioner, becomes, goes through all the training, becomes a planning commissioner. When that project comes up, the neighbor's project, clearly that individual can't participate again. Um, but the question is, when a similar project comes up, has that person so entrenched in their position on whether the height or the density of a building or something, can they still, is it fair? Is it equitable? Can they still participate? And that happens for, I mean, it's just human nature. You aren't, you're here today because of your commitment to your community and your passion for the things that you believe in. And at several times, um, you're gonna have to just take a step back and say, can I be fair? Can I be impartial? Can I participate? Or have I so in, um, am I so committed to my beliefs that it's so black and white that I can't listen to any new information, I can't consider any other views? Then you have to kinda start to say, should I be participating at all? So those are some of the, um, challenges that you'll have as, as an elected official. Okay.
And, and, and I'm assuming that would also apply to views that you might have developed prior to being elected?
Yes, and things that you have gone public and print, and put in print. And, um, we'll talk about that in one of the slides coming up. Okay, board roles and responsibilities. You're gonna see this a couple of times. The board speaks with one voice and you're, take action by a majority. Sometimes it's a, hopefully it's a five oh vote, if it's a four one, a three two split. You can have a difference of opinion, but the majority stands. And even if you didn't vote for it, you know, you can, you can talk about all the reasons that you don't support that. But the board speaks with one voice. You don't get to, um, uh, direct staff or do any, take action contrary to that board majority. Um, no individual member speaks on behalf of the board unless authorized to do so by a majority of the board to do so. Commissioner, Commissioner Supervisor Medina, uh, spoke to that a little bit earlier about who's authorized to talk for the board. And that's a decision between the five of you, is who's your spokesperson? Are you able to go out in the public or be interviewed and speak on behalf of the board? No, you're able to speak on your position and your views, but unless the board has authorized you to speak for the majority, you're not authorized to represent what the board is. And you do see that sometimes if, um, let's say there's a project at a particular city within the county. And, um, let's say it's even the city you live in. And let's say that you live in Hollister and you have a, a, um, a position on something that the Hollister City Council is taking up. You, under First Amendment, have a right as a citizen, as an individual, to go to that meeting and speak on your own behalf and your own views. What you don't have is the ability to represent, stand up and say, I am a supervisor for the county of San Benito and, and, and we think. You can't represent yourself on the board unless you've been authorized to do so. Okay?
Can, can I interject there?
Sure.
I think that's kind of where we have the miscommunication and misinformation on, on social media, where we have, um, elected officials standing there and professing to make a statement which should be stated clearly, that it's purely their own personal position. But because we're such a small community, um, individuals are, are, are known in the community. So they, the public perception is they are speaking on behalf of that jurisdiction, even though it is, it is not the case. And so, um, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this, but I know that the city of Hollister wants to have a, um, a, a meeting with the county, um, board of supervisors as well as the city of San Juan, just to see how we can kinda go forward and have a joint, um, meeting. Um, I don't know the, the, the crux of what needs to be discussed, but I know that that's a, that's a desire. And, um, one of the issues that keeps coming up is the message that we're giving as individuals, that it needs to be a unified message, and that's why I keep harping on, you know, utilizing the, um, uh, public information officer to the extent possible that we can, um, because, as I know, as board members, we all have, um, our own Facebook page and we're making statements and we're not speaking on behalf of this legislative body, but the public perception is we are. And so, just to kinda heads up.
And to take a, a little step further, we can't speak on behalf of the, uh, of the board as a whole, but am I thinking also that we shouldn't be speaking on behalf of our own district? In, I mean, maybe there's difference, it's different in different situations, but, I mean, even though we represent individual districts, we ultimately are voting as a entire board. Um, so I don't know if...
Again, you can represent your views and you can base those views based on what you hear in either your district or another district, I mean, or anywhere in your community. But again, you, um, the best practice, um, is to be clear about who you're speaking for. That you're speaking as an individual or a member of the public in, in your role as a board of supervisor, that this is what you think based on what you've heard, kind of thing. Um, you know, a broad representation, say, my constituents may or may not be accurate. Um, that's, that's your choice, how you do it, but what you can't do is speak on behalf of the board. And, um, as, as Commissioner or Supervisor Gonzalez pointed out, is you have to be clear about that, about who you're representing. Because there is, I mean, it's easy to, to blur those lines. My apologies. Most of your authority for the, your board, what you can and can't do, comes from state law. Your roles are your executive powers. Your supervision of your key three county officials. We've talked about your legislative roles when you're making, amending, modifying rules, regulations for the county. Your quasi judicial role when you are sitting as, and, uh, quasi judicial as a judge in a hearing on a permit, a land use, a, um, uh, some sort of property right. You have that hat. You also have a hat because you are overseeing county revenue and you do sit, um, on revenue hearings and assessment appeals. And Ray will address that. And then you also, um, serve on regional agency boards. You have other assignments. So you wear lots and lots of hats. In the fifty-eight counties in California, there are forty-four that are general law counties. And general laws are approved by the legislature and the governor. And you must, you are one of the forty-four general law counties and you have to follow state statutes, um, that dictate the number of appointment and election procedures for the county officials. There are fourteen counties that have, that have the ability to do their, um, their own rules by charter over and above, um, uh, state law. You are authorized as a county to make and enforce local ordinances that don't conflict with general state law. So you can regulate anything that's not regulated by state law so long as you, um, are not more restrict, or more permissive than state law. County has the power to sue and be sued, purchase.
Here's the question of the day, and I know it's, uh, probably highly debated, but I'm just curious. Being that we have to, uh, enforce or, you know, authorize the county to make and force local ordinances that, uh, do not conflict with the general laws of the state? Does that include executive orders?
I don't, I don't know that those rise to the same level as a statutory. You, you can't exceed your statutory.
Well, I understand that, but that's where I'm just wondering, you know, because I know it's, everybody's debating whether.
Whether you can or can't.
Yeah.
I'm going to tiptoe around this thing.
But at this point in time, the state.
I don't have confidence or, or direction from the courts of the law.
That, that's what I was asking. So the judiciary branch, being the state Supreme Court and the federal Supreme Court, if they came out with an opinion that stated that the executive orders were unlawful, then we would have to abide by, by that. Am I correct to state that?
There are already some court, uh, cases winding their way through California by other cities and counties. And there are some, um, I'm trying to think which, uh, which, um, uh, trial court state, um, but have already, one of the Northern California counties, they're judicial at the trial level, at the superior court level, has already ruled against that. But that hasn't wound itself up to the appellate court or the, in California or the state Supreme Court. So I don't feel confident unless, I'll defer to Barbara, but I don't feel confident to be able to say whether or not that is a violation of law or not yet.
Okay, so, um, yeah, we might have to talk a little bit more in depth, so, um.
As I'm prepared of the board to.
And I think that goes to the public speaker's question about. So about whether or not a, um, a supervisor that has an opinion contrary to an exec, governor executive order is a violation of their, uh, I think the question was, do they have to uphold the laws of the state? And is that a conflict of interest or violates their obligation? And I think the answer is, we might not know that yet. Haven't heard from the courts yet, a definitive opinion as to, um, whether or not that is something that, um, every elected official as part of their oath has to uphold. If you ask most cities and counties who are suing the state right now, they would argue that, you know, they have a right to be heard on this issue. So I don't know that that's well settled law yet.
I mean, I can opine that if you made an ordinance saying that it's lawful to do X, Y, and Z, and the state order says it's not lawful to do X, Y, and Z, the state law or order, the guidance is going to prevail. So you cannot conflict with the state.
But we can be more, more strict.
You can be more strict in this regard, yes. So, um, let me know if you want me to do.
I just want the board to understand also, and I think everybody knows what's going on, but I just want to make sure that they understand that there is the.
There is the executive order. It's not a law, it's an order. And then, of course, we have ordinances that are at the county level. So that's all I wanted to.
Right, but it has, it can be enforced.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
There are lots of distinctions. Under the Emergency Services Act, the governor has the authority to make, uh, rules and regulations that take effect immediately and have the force of law. But what we're talking here is a conflict of interest is not a, is different from a difference of opinion. A conflict of interest, as we've been discussing, is a financial interest. It is not a policy interest in a particular point of view on a topic of, of. So it's, you, you, people can have differences of opinion and express them. That's part of your role, to make policy, to disagree about policy. And, uh, the fact that you may or may not agree with the governor's order or, uh, that it's prudent or appropriate to follow. And, uh, that's within your purview to do that. And, uh, again, so there's, you can have differences of opinion. Essentially, you know, uh, a majority can't compel a, a minority member of the board to refuse to express their opinion. You know, to prohibit them from expressing their opinion. They have a, a First Amendment right to, uh, have their own opinions. It's just when you act as a board, you have to count to at least three. And in some instances, you have to count to four. When I consider who my client is, my client is the County of San Benito. And that means at least three supervisors have directed me as to what my client's decision is on a matter. And I, there may be those of you who different with those policies. But I'm bound by what a, a majority of the board, or effective majority of the board, decides and directs me to do in my capacity as an attorney for the board, so.
Yeah, and if you have any other questions, just direct them to me and we can try to get them answered at a future.
Right, and, and, you know, I think we've been referring to Gallagher versus Newsom. That case was decided in Sutter County. The Third District Court of Appeal has stayed the effectiveness of that order. That's still being, uh, uh, heard and decided by the Third District Court of Appeal. Other courts, other cases have raised that same issue in a direct, uh, application to the State Supreme Court. So, uh, stay tuned.
May I ask on Tuesday that we get that Gallagher as a supplement? If it's not already supplied to us? I, I, I can read a court brief and I have no problem analyzing it, but just put it in clear, plain English so that if that's going to be the rule of law that we're going to be using and looking at in terms of making a determination here at the county level?
But the, I should say that the trial court decision was stayed at the Court of Appeals and the Court of Appeals hasn't issued it an opinion yet.
Right, and I understand it's at the appellate level, right. But at this point, there has, at this point, there has been a decision made.
But it's been stayed, so it's not in effect. So there's.
There's the challenge, there's court language, but there's just something, yeah.
And it's also not binding on the rest outside of Sutter County, as you, you know, pointed out. And, and that's what I think, I mean, it's not like we're, you know, I mean, we're trying to answer the questions as candidly as we can, uh, as both Joel and Barbara indicated. There's just a lot we don't know. There are, there are other courts, um, decisions at the trial court level that have actually upheld the, the, um, executive order. And that may be beneficial, and I'll defer to Barbara and Ray about providing that information to you. It's just that, that is the only county that has come out so far, the judiciary, that has made that determination. So it is an outlier and we just don't know where that's going at this point.
So, so we can make a, make a decision, let's say we make a decision, uh, an ordinance to enforce, uh, the state COVID guidelines. And we can make a decision, whether it be a three out of five or four out of five, depending on circumstances. But are, should we not be referencing the fact that we must follow California state emergency guidelines? And, and just make the decision on our, I, I, I don't know if.
Yeah, I think we are getting a little bit off.
A little bit off, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
Excuse me?
Yeah, we'll have to address all these. These don't actually fall under the conflict of interest laws. It's a different issue about the premises of, you know, constitution versus laws of California. But we'll be sure to address that and maybe we could talk after.
Okay.
Just, and, and for housekeeping, why don't we take a break about twelve thirty? Take a ten minute, fifty minute break?
At twelve thirty?
Yeah, if we can. Or, or where it, where we can actually stop, where it's a good spot to stop.
I'm going to hope that we're going to be able to stop by twelve thirty.
Oh, cool, I'll be quiet.
Let's, let's go through this and see.
Wow, okay.
I don't know, maybe I'm over optimistic.
I won't say anything, I promise.
No, ask questions. Okay, um, board authority. You can only perform your authority in a regularly or specially convened meeting. You have no authority to act or, or make a decision legislative, quasi judicial, outside of a duly noticed meeting. You have no power to act for the county merely because you're members of the board. You act by decision, um, of the majority of the board. I know, you've heard that five times already now. You perform your executive role when you set your priorities for the county. You're going to be having, uh, you know, most, most boards set your priorities. You oversee most county departments and programs and approve an annual budget. Your executive role is to supervise the official conduct of your appointees, the three that we've talked about. And, uh, your executive role is managing, controlling the county property and appropriating and spending money on programs that meet the county's needs. So other supervisory, um, roles as a county official's executive is, um, you manage at a hundred foot level. You have appointees that manage at that day to day level. So the board doesn't have the direct control of the day to day operations of a department or an employee. That is delegated to your C A O. And your C A O acts based on your direction and guidance. And I think that that's a distinction that, um, that, uh, all elected officials, you know, you know that, um, but a, a member of the public will say, why didn't you, you know, fire so and so? That is a day to day, um, issue for your appointee, not necessarily for you as a board, if it's a, a, not one of your appointees. You supervise the official conduct of the county officers, your appointees. You, um, require them to, uh, perform their duties. But you don't direct the day to day, um, uh, to, to the extent that you, um, have those discussions with your C A O.
One thing I'd like to add is, um, there was some, um, it was a little bit convoluted there for a bit with some of our policies because there, um, any, any kind of action like that at times would take the C A O as well as the board. So last, was it a year or two year ago, we went ahead and cleaned that language up. I think we recently did some more cleanup language with the clerk of the board as well, uh, reporting, um, I believe to the C A O. So there's some cleanup language that we've actually addressed. I just wanted to make sure the board, this board is mindful of that. We're still going through that and, and look forward to actually getting some more input from you on, on, um, the policies that we have internally with staff.
With that being said, Ray, the board, who direct, who are the direct reports to the board?
There are three, the C A O, county council, and the ad commissioner.
So those three are the ones that we should be at, talking to the most about having things done at a lower level, is that?
That's correct. That's, that's in essence what Judith has mentioned, yeah.
Well, once again, it is yourself, Barbara, and Ms. Overstreet.
And keep in mind though, from my, my point of view, and I've expressed this, I'm always, um, I think the door should be open for you to, to really understand as well. And where, where that understanding comes from is from the department heads. They are touching and feeling issues in their respective departments. I've never had an issue with board members going in and wanting to get some more information. A lot of times your, your board members would come to me, hey, I'm going to go, you know, I need to go talk. That's fine.
But information is different than direction.
Well, yeah, there, there you go.
I just want to make sure we all understand that information.
Sometimes that gets convoluted too, sometimes though. But just, and I'm, I'm really glad you mentioned that because that is important to, um, to decipher the two.
And that's not a statutory requirement, um, in the sense that more departments could be direct reports to the board if the board felt to do so. But it has been delegated in this county. And the other distinction that I would say is that, um, elected, uh, elected officials have, um, you know, um, authority to, to run, you know, specifically their departments. And the board, um, primarily controls like, things like budget and salary of the employees within those departments and, you know, some policies that are countywide, such as purchasing.
And specifically, she's referring to elected department heads, the sheriff, D A, the, um, the assessor, tax collector, treasurer, and the auditor controller.
Litigation that the county is involved in. Board of supervisors has the power to direct and control and conduct the litigation in consultation, you know, with your county council. And it requires a two thirds vote to employ outside attorneys to assist the county council in conducting such litigation if it's not being managed in, internally. Um, and that's usually in, um, in discussions with county council. And the, but the, ultimately, the decision to hire special counsel is up to the supervisors and usually based on a recommendation of senior staff. Board actions. As the legislative, you're had as a legislature. Board may act by resolution, board order, or by ordinance. What does that mean? A board order is a directive from the board of supervisors to its subordinate county officers. You could actually, um, as, uh, uh, direct, um, the C A O to do or not do something by board order. An ordinance is a, is a local law adopted by you with all the formality of a state statute, uh, but it's a local statute. It has the full force and effect of the law once it's adopted. The California constitution allows a county to make or enforce within its limits all local police, sanitary, and other ordinances and regulations that don't conflict with state law. Most legislative acts are adopted by ordinance. In contrast, a resolution is a expression of an opinion or decision of a government agency adopted by a majority vote. So if you want to adopt a new law, you do it by ordinance. If you want to just do like a regulation or a direction or recognize someone, you do it by resolution. It's, it's a opinion or decision. It's not necessarily how, it doesn't have the same force and effect, um, as, uh, an ordinance. Let's talk about, um, the types of ordinances. about the types of ordinances. So, how ordinances are drafted are specifically guided by the government code, by the state law, the form, the content, the process by doing it. There are a couple different kinds of ordinances. There are urgency ordinances that are adopted for just what it says, urgency, and those require a four-fifths vote. So four out of five of you have to vote for an urgency ordinance, and it goes into effect immediately. And you use those sparingly, just to, usually do as an interim step until you have time to really have public hearings, analyze, study an issue. You often, if, if you think that it's something of great importance, will do an urgency ordinance, more as a stopgap. They're a short duration, you have to renew them, there's a whole process. But most other ordinances, regular ordinances, require two readings. There's a first agenda item to introduce it, to give background, and then there's a second agenda item at a subsequent hearing that requires the actual adoption. And then an ordinance is generally not effective until thirty days after the date of adoption. So, an ordinance process, if you're meeting twice a month, could really actually take sixty days to put into place. If you introduce it at your first meeting of a month, as the first reading and introduction, and the adoption is at your second meeting in the month, and then it's got thirty more days, it's almost a sixty-day process to, to actually adopt an ordinance. Or to have an ordinance be effective, I guess is the appropriate way to say that. Ordinances require statutory notices, so, to the public on certain items. And again, your staff will guide you through whether it's supposed to be an ordinance, resolution, or a board order. Okay, you've heard a lot today about your role as a judge, quasi-judicial role. Settlement of claims will come to you as a board, audit accounts related to management and dispersment of funds, and the hearing process for land use matters that Joel's gonna talk about soon. Other roles that you have, you also serve on other capacities, on boards, commissions, and as intergovernmental relations, you're all assigned to other duties that you do with other local agencies. State statute authorizes various service functions to be carried out by entities other than the board of supervisors. So sometimes you have to delegate, but you have a seat on that, on that entity. Okay, police powers. Under the California Constitution and the U.S. Constitution, police powers, the authority conferred upon states, delegated to cities and counties to enact their own laws to preserve, protect the safety, health, welfare, and morals of the community. And you will hear the term police powers numerous times, because that's generally the authority that you have to adopt your own rules and regulations. Police power is the basic right of government to make laws, regulations for the benefit of their community so long as it doesn't conflict with state or federal law. Only states have the right to make laws based on their police power, and the federal government, their role is to govern laws specific to the powers under the Constitution. So, again, different levels of laws, and who preempts who? Barbara?
Yeah, and so the cities and the counties obtain their police power through the state.
Yes. And the board may, and in this case has, delegated its duties to its appointees, the C A O, county council, or the ad commissioner. And you can do that by ordinance, resolution, or board order, where specifically allowed by state law to delegate. There are some duties you're not able to delegate, and those specific, staff will advise you if they can't, you know, if that's a decision you have to make as opposed to delegate. Board delegates currently the day-to-day operations to the C A O, prepares, the C A O prepares and recommends an annual budget to the board for your consideration, and the C A O in San Bonito coordinates activities of the county departments to ensure implementation of the board's directions and policy. And I think that just reiterates what Ray already told you what he does. Also, is the county administrative officer is, shall be recognized and functioned as the C A O. They will advise, assist, and be your liaison for anything you need within the county. They're work with you for the proper, proper and efficient administration of your affairs so that you can do the job you were elected for. They prepare and recommend to you personnel rules and revisions and amendments. They, the C A O also does the classification studies and plans for the county staff, and, and makes its recommendations to you. And that is a brief overview of what that C A O's role is compared to what your role is. Okay, rules of procedure. Do I have thirty seconds?
Twenty-five.
One minute? Okay. So currently, county of, San Bonito has your own rules of procedure. The way you organize your meetings, the way you operate your meetings. And there is a policy regarding that. And you can work with the county council and C A O on any kinds of changes, amendments, modifications to that. We always get asked is, what about Roberts rules or, or Rosenberg rules? There are two sets of rules that some agencies, and I say some, use, either instead or to supplement their own rules where their rules are silent. And it's just a rule of procedure. What do you do when you make a motion and there's an opposition? What do you do, you know, how do you, how do you manage an orderly meeting? And basically, your current rules will do that. Ray asked me to just point out that there are some standard rules that other agencies use, often to supplement their own. Roberts is a little challenging because it's eight hundred-plus pages of rules. And I will speak from personal experience, when I'm staffing a board supervisors, or, or planning commission, or city council meeting, and somebody asks me a rule procedures, I'm probably not gonna be able to plow through eight hundred and sixteen pages of rules to come up with a really quick answer in thirty seconds. Contrasting that, there's Rosenberg's rules, and those are six-page in length and available online. And a lot of agencies are shifting as that is the backup and away from Roberts, because they're more clear, plain English, and easi-, more easily understandable, and can be managed during a meeting. And again, there's no one right way, and nobody has to do any, other than your own rules that have sufficed. You don't have to do anything. But if you wanna know, there are other rules out there. We have a cheat sheet that we often give, our firm gives to elected officials and appointed officials about a quick way to run a meeting. Now, you'll need to check with Ray and Barbara about how that comports to your own rules, but this is under Rosenberg's. So it just is a quick kind of thought, like, as a chair or a vice chair, oh, I have to call for a motion, I need a second, I need a, you know, I need a quorum, how, how do I do these things? Benefits and burdens, that's a discussion for a future time for you folks if you're interested with the C A O's office. Okay, questions, comments?
Just one comment before we break, Ray. I just wanna make sure we all up here understand that there are elected officials. There are the elections, comptroller, auditor, that's one of them, the sheriff, the D A, the treasurer, and the assessor. Now, when it comes to the sheriff, and these other agents, these other elected officials, we do, they do not report to us. They are completely autonomous. So, that's some of the issues that some of the counties have versus the city where a lot of the stuff is appointed. So I just wanna make sure we all understand that if you have something to add to that, Ray.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I'll add, I'll add to that. Just, I think historically, and kind of where we're at with our elected department heads, they have all been really good. They've all just been tremendous. They're eager to work with the board, they're eager to work with administration. I have regular department head meetings, they all attend, and they take part of the op-, you know, ongoing operational items. They're very in tune with H R and many other things that come down the pipe. So, I think we're very glad to have them. I think our county is maybe somewhat unique compared to other counties that may do really have some real issues with their elected officials. But I just wanted to share that with you. And they're always willing to work with us and as well as the board, so, just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank you for the excellent presentation.
Thank you for your patience and participation this morning. I know, or this afternoon, it's been a long haul.
Very helpful.
Yeah, it was a, an excellent presentation, and I just wanted to clarify for the board that state law has a requirement that every two years you obtain two hours of training in, in ethics, and that applies to planning commissioners, and also staff. It's, it's an obligation that I have. So, I'm, there are certain certification requirements. I'm not sure whether today's session was intended to meet that requirement.
No, it's not. And that's what I, now, now you get the bad news. Luckily, you can do the required training online, and.
Yes.
Most counties do it every, on the even years? Are you on a?
Well, I can tell you, I do know that, just I wanted to highlight and add to that, is that the new board members, they're going through training. I think you already attended one class in December. There's another class March, I believe, and then June or July. So there's three classes. Some of this material will be covered in that, and that is account, you can account for that time. You know, I, we just felt it was very important for you to hear this. And we tailored it somewhat to our county. You know, I think that was kind of the key. You know, some of this is general information, but I think it's really advantageous for you to be successful to understand kind of the nuances and how the, this relates to us as San Bonito County. So, so I wanna thank Judith as well, and thanks staff for working on this, because we did meet quite a bit over the last few months to, to make sure that this information was set up properly for you. And, yeah.
Yeah, and one of the topics, and I'm sure you've probably already been introduced to that, which is, there's an obligation to disclose your financial interests. And we didn't cover that today, but it's an annual statement of economic interests. And so that perhaps can help you focus on the areas where you have a financial interest that might lead to a conflict that, that, of the kinds of, that we discussed today, and then how to process, how to deal with the situation should those conflicts arise. So, get your Form 700s, assuming office statements on file, and, and if you have any questions about that, we'll be happy to help you as well.
And if you haven't already finished your ethics training and/or the anti-harassment, they're very, very informative, and it covers, I would say, about ninety percent of what we heard today. Yes.
Yeah, hopefully today was a refresher, and maybe just to highlight the things that you should be continuing to ask and, and be engaged on.
Good deal. All right, so with that, maybe I'll go ahead and open it up for questions from the public, or anyone else maybe online. Graciela?
Members of the public who wish to speak, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. We have no speakers via Zoom at this time.
I'm sorry, I was, what was that? We're not, okay, my apologies, sorry about that. I had county council in my ear. So with that, we're, we're finished with this item, and we'll be moving on to the next item. There's gonna be some overlapping information. But why don't we take a ten, fifteen-minute recess and, and break, and then we'll come back?
Ravine?
Yeah, yeah.
You, okay.
One o'clock. We'll reconvene at one.
All right, yeah, so I'd like to go ahead and reconvene, reconvene the meeting. Thank you. So, we will go ahead and move on to our second item of discussion, training, education. And I'll go ahead and start and open this item up. This item is to review with your board, the board rules and procedures, obligation use of ad hoc, I think it's really important for your board to understand that. I think we've given a general sense of that from our prior presentation, but what does that mean for our county specifically? And that's what we're going to talk a little bit about, committees and ad hocs and boards that you're responsible for, or you're responsible to have individuals within your district or within the county to, to sit on some of these committees and commissions. The also, also is guide to conducting the meetings, and then landings 101, sequels, and the planned zoning, the role of planning commissioners. So one of the things I think that was important in our discussion in developing the, the material for today's session is governance and like what your roles are within our county. And, uh, we, we felt that it was appropriate to have this item on because we do have multiple hats that were brought out earlier. So now we're gonna, gonna delve into some of those hats, what are they? And still not get into the details, but delve in a little bit more until we have Joel, um, Ellen Wood here, Ellis Wood here to, um, elaborate further. He has, uh, planning background and, uh, he's gonna be able to elaborate further on that. We also have our legal counsel, county counsel, that will review, um, so the legal principles within our county and how that relates to you. Um, and, um, so with that, I'd go ahead and like to invite Joel up.
Uh, good afternoon supervisors, uh, and to the public, um, planning commissioners, uh, all who may be in attendance. Uh, I'm Joe Ellenwood, I'm the assistant county counsel, I've been here a year and, uh, a few months and, uh, previously, uh, was chief, uh, deputy county counsel, uh, in Humboldt County and previously in private practice in California since nineteen eighty four and previously in research in nineteen eighty. So I'm celebrating my glorious, uh, anniversary of, uh, practicing law and I still haven't gotten it quite right, but we keep practicing. So today I'm, um, making a presentation on California land use and environmental law and I've been given half an hour. This is the course outline of, uh, similar introductory, uh, that I did it with, uh, Abbott and Fenderman when I was an associate there in Sacramento for UC Davis Extension. Uh, I had forty five slides, uh, ninety eight pages of, uh, course materials, um, I'm not gonna inflict that for six hours. I'm not gonna inflict that on you today. I've been given half an hour, so, and I have just two slides, so with that, we'll get started. Uh, I think it's important to look at what the enforcement of the law are, I'm gonna go over this very quickly. Um, you know, we, we, uh, cover the English common law tradition, the court made law and that, uh, deals with, uh, property rights and a number of different instances. Of course, there are federal and state constitutional law, uh, that, uh, all in test land use decisions, property rights, uh, application of the police power, uh, which we discussed before. Due process and equal protection requirements under, uh, the Bill of Rights and, and, uh, freedom of speech, religion association, privacy travel. And in California in particular, under the California Constitution, the right, uh, of initiative and referendum by citizens, uh, which has a particular impact on land use law. So there's a hierarchy from federal, state and local government, uh, that establishes which law takes precedence over, uh, the other and it's a complex, you know, relationship between, uh, with, uh, again, local government, county, uh, actions through reduction of ordinances, most of which are codified and available to you in the public, resolutions which are not generally, uh, you know, codified or available except the time, uh, inquiry, or board orders which are generally reflected in the minutes where, uh, action summaries are to be. Uh, then there is decisional law and again, uh, prior to, excuse me, with the federal courts, the Supreme Court in the United States, where, uh, uh, within the United States, Board of the Fields, uh, US Board of the Fields and we are in the US District Court for the Northern District of California. Uh, the state Supreme Court, of course, uh, is the, uh, final word on, uh, decisions interpreting, uh, the state constitutional law. And, um, we're again part of the Second District Board of Appeals and our local court is across the street, that's San Antonio County Superior Court. But there are also, uh, the decisional laws of administrative agencies at the federal, state and regional and, uh, local, uh, agencies, which can include, uh, special districts, schools, water, and school districts and so on. What is the role of local officials, both, uh, members of the board of supervisors and the planning commissioners? It's first to understand to the extent as possible for anybody that can literally understand the law, uh, apply and comply with the law, uh, to the best of our abilities. Uh, it's county council's, uh, obligation to assist the counties and its agencies in complying and understanding and complying with law. But also, local officials, uh, make laws and they do so in a couple of different capacities as we discussed before, uh, the county. Uh, they exercise legislative authority, which is generally speaking, making policies and rules of general application. And examples of the exercise of legislative authority in the land use context are, uh, the adoption of general and specific plans, zoning ordinances and the, the sort of development of business. There, there is also the quasi adjudicatory, uh, um, or ruling on specific cases or applications, uh, for permit that, um, is essentially a function of applying the rules and standards of the general plan and, uh, zoning ordinance, the specific, uh, properties or, uh, development of business. Examples for that, uh, would be a variance, a use permit or subdivision map or design review in the, uh, land use context. And in exercising the quasi adjudicatory authority, there are more rigorous requirements for due process, including notice and fair hearing and unbiased decision makers than would apply in the legislative system. So, uh, to have a fair hearing, uh, the applicant and the general public have a right to an unbiased decision making body that is not prejudiced against, that is gonna appear and decide the case on the basis of the evidence presented in the public hearing. And, uh, that's an essential, uh, part of due process and one of the things that, of course, we look at, uh, upon judicial review. Is has there been a fair decision making process? Due process, the essence of it is a notice, uh, that some action is gonna be taken, that's gonna affect your, uh, rights in, in some way or another, uh, whether that's economic or maybe the interest, um, and an opportunity to defer. And again, deferred by an unbiased, uh, fair decision making, uh, authority that's gonna make that decision on the basis of the evidence that's been afforded and not on, uh, outside information or other, uh, considerations that are not tied to the evidence presented. So, uh, in the quasi adjudicatory, um, context, the planning commissions, um, um, issues approvals of variants and use from a subdivision map and design review, but all of those decisions are subject to right of appeal to the board of supervisors. And so when an appeal comes before the board, you, the board will then be acting on a quasi issue, this is called authority, and they review authority of, of a, uh, decision made by the planning commission. And so the procedure that applies, uh, is determined by the type of authority that's being exercised. There are much more rigorous, public, uh, notice requirements for quasi adjudicatory, uh, decisions than for legislative decisions. Uh, legislative decisions are subject to, the Brown Act, uh, and, uh, public hearing, notice but not specific to, I think, uh, property within a, a certain distance to those property affected people. That's the appeal itself.
Where does the appeal come from?
The appeal is, uh, taken by any interested party. So it could be the applicant is, uh, unsatisfied with the conditions of his duty or their, their application is denied and so they're appealing to the, the supervisors. Or it could be, uh, persons, uh, in the community who are objecting to this.
How long do they have to appeal?
Uh, it's, it's generally speaking within ten days of the, of the decision that's been taken. And there is, uh, a, a fee that's appi- uh, applies to appeals, it's ten and ten circumstances to do it. And then when an appeal comes before the board, uh, you have the option to decide based on the records that's been presented to you from the, uh, planning commission or to conduct a new hearing from statute unless you know who is here. So, uh, California has a hierarchy of land use authorities. Um, uh, even though, uh, there is a strong tradition of local control of land use decisions, that is governed by a statutory framework. And, um, and that is, uh, provides, there's assistance given by the, uh, Office of Planning and Research or ACR that's, uh, appointed by the governor. Um, and there are, of course, state agencies that have a great amount of impact on, uh, the local land use, uh, decisions even though it's not under our control. Uh, obviously, health and, uh, the example of California's kind of Bible and discipleship improvement, uh, we live at their mercy. To some degree, we have some opportunities to interact with them through, through elements of, uh, through local funding sources, but, uh, ultimately, um, uh, they, they control the process. There are natural resources, uh, agencies, there's the, um, fishing and wildlife, uh, there's Forest Forestry and Alfire, uh, some incentives to those. The air and water board, the California Air and Forests Board, which is primarily responsible for dealing with the ability of land use impact and that has, uh, requirements, uh, that apply to general plans and, and, uh, obviously, in the deeper context of the district. Uh, the state water qualities and coal board, the regional water values and federal, uh, that, uh, govern, uh, ways to promote all types of, uh, developments that certainly need water to, uh, interest the public. And, uh, notably, uh, particularly with the housing crisis, uh, is the Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, which oversees the housing element, uh, of the general planning process, uh, on the shorter, recent years, the, uh, and the revision schedule from the general plan, uh, the rest of the general plan. And, uh, it's a very complex, uh, 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 rapidly evolved. Um, so the, the various state agencies may have their regional ANLs, uh, regional urgent urgent and their foundation schedules, which regional waters all be controlled. And then locally, we have councils, governments, uh, you know, planning, transportation, planning agencies, all that play a role in the, uh, land use, uh, context. Um, and overlook, uh, local agencies, uh, with a great deal of authority concerning land use, is the local agency formation commission. That is not a, uh, a county agency, it is an independent, uh, public agency with majority on the state law. And they are to discuss the relationship between, uh, service providers and local government agencies and special districts within the, the, the town. And so things like annexations, the boundaries, determination, the service areas, uh, urban service review, all are roles of the local agency formation commission. Um, I believe that there are members of the board who, uh, sit on, uh, lap cells. In that capacity, you're not acting as a member of the board of supervisors, you are, um, a member of the government body of the local agency formation commission. And as I mentioned, these four cities, these counties, uh, there's a strong tradition of local control of planning and zoning. And I, I say that as, it's a tradition, it's a cultural value, it's a political value, but it's not, it's fine anywhere in particular in law. Um, as, uh, was pointed out before, the California Constitution grants, uh, the local government, uh, general jurisdiction, citizen count, uh, police, uh, which is to make their enforcement of law within its limits, uh, local police ministries and other ordinances and regulations not in conflict with the general laws of the state of California or the federal government to that matter. And the, um, framework for the exercise of that power is laid out in the planning and zoning laws, which is, and the subdivision map act, uh, which is in the government side. Uh, and again, at the local level, there are special districts which are service providers only, they don't have police powers to, um, to adopt, uh, uh, ordinances except as related to subdivision of, uh, uh, the general. So, uh, what is, in some light, uh, the centerpiece for, uh, the planning and zoning law is the general plan. General plan is, uh, often interpreted as the constitution of land use. And so all government decisions affecting the use of land or the, of specific development or within the jurisdiction must be consistent with the general plan. Having to cap on provisions, uh, acquisition and sale of land, zoning, use permit, subdivision map, specific plans and development of business, all must be consistent with the general plan, but not, uh, can be invalidated. Now, general plan must be comprehensive, internally consistent, and take a long term use, typically twenty to thirty years, sometimes fewer, your time for this to expire. And because it's set along, uh, nationalized and, uh, frequently, uh, regulated, viewed as a purpose to determine whether or not additional, uh, amendments are necessary to, meaning to conform with the law, actually, uh, state law to be drawn to the plan. Uh, a general plan, uh, consists of a statement of policy as diagrams or maps, um, uh, sets forth objectives, principles, standards and proposals, uh, to, uh, and sets forth income and pension measures to, uh, to, uh, exactly, specific standards and proposals.
The zoning ordinance or zoning maps to be consistent with changes in the land use diagram for, uh, uh, the general plan. They're also mandated to be annual progress reports on how the implementation of the general plan is going. So the general plan has, under state law, has seven mandatory elements, land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, known housing, conservation, open space, noise, and safety. But other optional elements can be added, or the elements can be combined or organized within a broad discretion of the local government adopting it. And as I mentioned before, the housing element is one that has had a great deal more attention and is often set out in a separate document because it's updated more frequently than the general plan. Other elements are frequently done. Housing elements set, this housing element sets goals for meeting the regional need for housing at all income levels and identifying lands for where those needs can be accommodated throughout the jurisdiction. And so there, as I say, it's complex and time consuming to continually update it and make the necessary reports to the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. And they have overview and essentially a certification responsibility that has purse strings tied to it. So having a certified housing element is critical to receiving state funding in a number of different areas. So the adoption or amendment of the general plan or any element of the general plan requires tribal consultation. So we consult with the Native American Heritage Commission to identify the tribes that are traditionally and culturally identified with the region being affected by the general plan or other actions, and invite them to request consultation and then meet and confer with them in good faith to, primarily for the purposes of protecting the cultural heritage and archaeological resources that that tribe is affiliated with. So, but then the process first goes through the Planning Commission, which has kind of general plenary authority to monitor and help develop the, and update the general plan. And they do so through holding workshops and notice public hearings. And ultimately, they make a recommendation to the board of supervisors as to any amendments to the general plan. After that, report of recommendations is provided to the board of supervisors, the board then gives notice of a public hearing and conducts public hearings before adopting the general plan. And curiously, for reasons I am not at all clear on how it happened, general plans are adopted by resolution, not by ordinance. Go figure. That's just the way the state law reads. General plan amendments may be combined with other land use approvals so as to achieve consistency between the general plan as being amended and the particular zoning or subdivision or specific plan that's under consideration. So frequently, general plan amendments are combined with other entitlement applications. Because it's a legislative act, the adoption or amendment of a general plan is subject to voter initiative or referendum. So voters can propose amendments to the general plan, and those, once the petition to put those amendments on the ballot, does not require hearings be conducted by either the Planning Commission or the board of supervisors, it goes directly to the voters. That's one of the reasons why some people are very critical of ballot box planning because there isn't the process to consider and have compromises reached or revisions to proposals made through the public hearing process. It just goes straight to the voters and it's up or down. Likewise, once a, going through, once the, you go through the standard procedure for adopting a general plan amendment, it's subject to referendum. So once it's approved, within thirty days, if the voters circulate a petition with ten percent of the vote that was cast for governor in the last gubernatorial election, if those signatures are certified, the changes in the general plan are suspended until such time as the election can be held. And under the referendum statutes, well, both referendum and initiative, that is, unless the board elects to call a special election, it would be on the next general election ballot. So it could be as long as two years before a vote is taken on an initiative or a referendum So how a general plan is actually implemented on the ground, the first step is by zoning. So the zoning has to be consistent with the land use element of the general plan. In the context, one of the, for example, the general plan that was adopted in 2015 identifies a number of commercial nodes throughout the county. And so in order to implement those policies, zoning amendments have been proposed and approved and subject to referendum about implementing the general plan. But there is a statutory requirement that zoning must be brought into consistency with the general plan within a reasonable time, and interested parties can bring an action to compel the county to do that. So there is an enforceable obligation to conform the zoning to the general plan.
Joel, excuse me, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So once a general plan's adopted, it was adopted in 2015, if, you earlier stated that all government decisions must be consistent with the general plan, if a development, let's say, comes in front of the planning commission and it is consistent with the general plan, in other words, it's, let's say, provides for residential housing there, is the, is the planning commission and then ultimately the board supervisor, supervisors obligated to approve that project if it's consistent with the general plan? I mean, often you run into these situations where you go through this long process of approving a general plan, people are supposed to give input, but then people don't. And then it's not until, there's actually a project, an actual project comes along, where then suddenly people come out of the woodwork and they're maybe against it or what have you, but it's consistent with the general plan that, I'm just curious, what are the obligations in a situation like that?
Well, the obligation is to bring the zoning into consistency within the, with the general plan within a reasonable time. And generally speaking, how it's, the specifics of how it's brought into consistency is subject to considerable discretion. You could, you could do a number of different, bring it into consistency in a number of different ways. And so, for example, if, if, if at first you don't succeed, you try, try again until potentially the general plan itself is amended so that that inconsistency is resolved through amendment of the general plan as opposed to amendment of the zoning to conform to the general plan.
I think it might be, so it might, I might see a different question that's also being raised as far as subdivisions that were consistent with the general plan, you do not have to approve them, you still need to make subdivision findings and sequel findings. So just, the general plan is just one step stool, one part of the stool, you have to also have the other provisions that would, that would also be met in order for something to be approved. So just because a specific project may be consistent with the general plan, for example, maybe there's other provisions that would not require it to be adopted, you're looking at the, your answer was about the zoning itself needs to be consistent with the general plan, or the general plan needs to be made, amended to be made consistent with the zoning, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
But subdivisions is a kind of a separate issue because there, again, there are lots of different ways. Essentially, approval of a subdivision map cannot be given unless it is consistent with the general plan. But there isn't an obligation to approve a subdivision because it is consistent with the general plan.
I mean, I'll often see where, let's say, residents of adjacent potential development, you know, are questioning why are these houses going in, and then you'll see the, the planning department may come back and say, well, or the planning commission, this was consistent with the general plan. And that is being, you know, the argument as to why this was approved and why we're moving forward. And, and so I just wondering.
Well, to put it in, in the context of logic, it's a, consistency for a subdivision approval is a necessary condition, but not a sufficient condition.
And also, staff, let's just say hypothetically, staff is often motivated by the policies that have been directed by the board. So if something's consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with the zoning, sometimes staff will feel that they should process that application because it is consistent with the previous policies that are put forth by the board. And then if the board doesn't believe that that's correct, then the board could, you know, maybe not adopt it. So that's sometimes why it's being brought forward. The other thing is with residential subdivisions, certain residential subdivisions, you'd have to have specific findings not to approve, which are much more detailed, I think, than our discussion here. But, so that's also, you know, I'll defer to Joe on that.
Right. Well, you know, when you refer to staff, staff has an obligation to process applications. Staff does not approve or deny applications. And in reporting on an application, they're, you know, they have a checklist, and one item's on the list is, is it consistent with the general plan? That's a legal requirement that applies to a zoning amendment or a conditional use permit or a variance or a subdivision map. So it's, it's something that staff is obligated to refer to, but in and of itself is not a sufficient or necessary, a sufficient reason to approve something. It would be, if it were inconsistent, it'd be a reason to deny it. But those findings are ultimately made first by the planning commission, based on staff recommendations, but, but they're not governed by the staff recommendations. If there is evidence in the record that, you know, reasonable people could disagree on, the staff could make one recommendation and the planning commission could make a different finding, and then when it was appealed to the board, the board could make yet a different finding, as long as there is substantial evidence in the record to support the conclusion. If it goes to court to review it, the court is not going to overturn it if, because they, you know, have a different opinion about how that, that evidence should be considered.
Real quick on general, general plan amendments, I understand the county hasn't done general plan amendments in recent years.
No, that's not exactly true because there are specific projects that in one way or another have required.
I was just going off of the staff report from the general plan update, I thought it said there hadn't been any updates to the 2015 general plan, maybe I'm mistaken on that. But my question is, how many, there's a, there's a maximum number of amendments you can do per year, I believe?
Yes, there are, you can, you can only have four amendments per year, but that limit is, you can combine any number of amendments in a batch. So you could have four batches of amendments in a year. So it's really not a limitation on the number of amendments, depending on the ability and willingness of staff in the, in the county to, to process them as batches, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So another finding, in addition to consistency with the general plan, it has to be, a zoning must be internally consistent, not resulting in discriminatory spot zoning, for example. But it also has to be finding of consistency with the general public health, safety, and welfare. And that's a pretty broad finding requirement. So, you know, you can justify approval or denial on the basis of consistency with general public health, safety, and welfare in any number of different ways. So that's within a discretion of the planning commission and ultimately the board of supervisors. But again, whatever the conclusion is, should be supported by substantial evidence in the record of that determination. And again, zoning is a legislative act, it's subject to initiative and referendum. And zoning amendments can be combined with general plan amendments, specific plan adoption or amendments, subdivision map approvals, and development agreements. So it's, it's common for a large development to have a package of all of those entitlements included in the, in the same approval. So zoning districts, under traditional zoning, you separate uses by what are commonly perceived to be compatible or incompatible uses, generally speaking, residential is separated from commercial, separated from industrial, separated from agricultural, to avoid the conflicts that may occur because of the characteristics of any of those uses. And, and then uniform standards would be applied to each of those districts. Minimum parcel size, height, bulk, setbacks, parking, sidewalks, utility, undergrounding, any number of, of criteria that could apply to, through zoning. And zoning districts typically specify what are uses that are permitted as of right and those which are permitted with a conditional use permit or a use permit. And so those that are permitted as of right would be allowed. If you're applying for something that was a conditional use, that would be a, a separate application for a quasi adjudicatory decision to approve a conditional use. And so that's an example of, of where an adjudicatory decision would, would come into effect pursuant to a zoning ordinance. And conditional use permits, as I said, are quasi adjudicatory decisions. So are variances, so are subdivision maps. And as such, they are not subject to the initiative or referendum power. That's, you can only have initiative or referendum with regard to a legislative act. Essentially, the citizens are standing in your shoes as a legislative body to exercise your legislative power through the ballot, but they can't sit in your, in your robes as a quasi adjudicatory decision making body to ex- body to exercise that discretion of the application of general rules to the specific application or, or facts. That's a role not granted to the voters under the California Constitution. So variances are an example where you might have a parcel that has an unusual size, shape, or topographic conditions, such that the usual standards that would apply in that zoning district could not be met. And so a variance could be granted to allow the development with, you know, a reduced parcel size, or setback, or other standards that would otherwise apply. So the Subdivision Map Act is in a separate part of the government code. It allows for the regulation and control of the design and improvement for subdivision of land for the purpose of sale, lease, or financing. There are certain exceptions to that that apply to agricultural uses, or leasing of commercial spaces, you know, once they've been developed like shopping malls, or so on. But subdivision map ordinances typically include street and frontage improvement requirements, what types of utilities, and how they should be configured. Drainage, stormwater, landscaping, parks, school site dedication, and development impact fees are all typical conditions of approval that would be applied to a subdivision map application. Subdivisions come in large or small packages. Small package would be considered a parcel map, which is four or fewer lots being divided from a parcel. And the typical subdivision includes a two-stage process. Approval of a tentative map, which sets forth all of the conditions of approval, and then once those conditions are, are satisfied, the recording of a final map. So the, the planning commission approves the tentative map, and once the Public Works Department typically certifies that all of the conditions of approval are, are met, it would be presented to the board of supervisors to accept the final map. And that decision is, is generally a ministerial one. It's just saying, all of the conditions of approval have been met, we're accepting the dedication of streets, or parks, or right-of-ways, and so on, as part of that approval before that map gets recorded, which would allow those parcels to be sold. The Subdivision Map Act itself includes certain mandatory timelines for review and approval, including appeals. The developer lobby has been very aggressive with the legislature in trying to refine those deadlines to expedite approval process, in part because, one of the, time is money in the development business. You're paying for options, you're paying for financing, and the longer it takes before you can get a return by selling things, the harder it is to be successful. So there are many other planning laws that we don't have time to go into in, in any detail at all, but they are related to all of these processes. The Permit Streamlining Act, which, again, would apply to conditional use permits, variances and the like. The Mitigation Fee Act, which establishes how to establish what mitigation fees are, and how they should be handled, and rights to contest them, and so on. The Development Agreement Law, which is a means to essentially preserve the rights to entitle a, a develop, to build out a development on the basis of the laws that applied at the time the development agreement was approved. So it's typically used for larger projects with a long time horizon for development, so that if the law changes, they can still build on the basis that it was approved originally. Development agreements typically require some type of community benefit, so there's a bargaining that occurs. Ray can fill you in on that process for a number of the current existing developments in the county. And I expect we may be engaging in that with projects in the future, in the area that have been under discussion, or for which applications are pending. The, the legislature seems to think that they can solve the housing crisis by passing more laws and more requirements. And so secondary dwelling units and density bonuses are examples of things, or mandatory approvals of projects that meet certain affordable housing criteria, so on. All look very good on, on paper for the, the legislature to pat itself on the back of saying they've done something. I don't believe that the actual production of housing has, has measurably resulted from that. So it's an ongoing problem, and the legislature just cannot leave it alone. It gets more and more complicated every session. And, and with, I'm editorializing here, obviously, but a actual practical solution is, is much harder to achieve. Another example of land use regulation is the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act that applies, and there are a number of gravel mining and surface mining operations throughout San Benito County that are governed by that, by that law. And that requires a determination about whether or not there's a vested right to continue mining for mines that have been in existence for a long period of time, or conditional use permits, but they also require approval of a reclamation plan. So once the, the resources mined out, it's gonna be returned to some state that is acceptable environmentally and, and otherwise. So, in shifting focus to environmental laws, the, the one that we, comes into play for the most part for the county is the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. It's found in the Public Resources Code, and their administrative regulations refer to as the SEQA guidelines, to spell out in greater detail how SEQA should be implemented. There's also a very extensive case law interpreting SEQA, sometimes extending or confounding SEQA. So it's a constantly evolving area of the law, largely because of case law developments. It applies to all discretionary governmental decisions that may cause a significant effect to the physical environment. So that's projects that the county is undertaking itself, such as the, you know, operating the landfill, or building a, a new building for the county, or the issuance of permits for land use provisions. So it is, spells out a process for identifying, analyzing, and disclosing to the public potentially significant and environmental effects, and requires that where feasible they should be avoided or mitigated to a level less than significant, which, which existed prior to, in the project being proposed or approved. The gold standard under SEQA is the Environmental Impact Report. And the reason for that is that it has the most deferential standard for judicial review. So if, if your action is being challenged under SEQA, you stand the best chance of success if you've approved an EIR. It also, because what applies is, what I mentioned before, the substantial evidence standard. As long as the conclusions set forth in, and findings set forth in the Environmental Impact Report are supported by substantial evidence, even though experts or reasonable people may disagree about those conclusions, the court will approve it, because it's been through the entire EIR process. EIRs also allow for the adoption for project approvals with overriding considerations. So notwithstanding the fact that a project may have significant unavoidable environmental effects, with appropriate findings about the social, cultural, or economic reasons that the project should be approved, it can be approved, notwithstanding those effects. You can't do that unless you approve an EIR. But the SEQA review process is briefly, first to decide whether or not SEQA applies to begin with. It doesn't, it only applies to discretionary decisions. So if it's a, is, if it's a mandatory or ministerial approval, such as the issuance of a building permit, if, you know, all of the requirements of the, of the, for a permit are, are established, then there's no discretion to deny it. You simply have to grant the permit, and that's not subject to SEQA. But, you know, most of the land use decisions that we've talked about are discretionary. General plan amendments, zoning ordinance amendments, approvals of conditional use permits, variances, subdivision maps, are all discretionary decisions. There's, if you're engaged, you're going to prepare a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, or an EIR, you have to engage in tribal consultation, just as with a general plan amendment. So there's a process laid out for that. But SEQA begins with an initial study. It's done, use, generally speaking, using what's referred to as the SEQA checklist, which lists all kinds of environmental concerns, and to identify potentially significant environmental effects. And if there is, again, substantial evidence that there may be a potentially significant environmental effect, the obligation under SEQA is to prepare an EIR. However, if the initial study determines that there are no significant environmental effects, it can, you can adopt what's known as a negative declaration. Or if there would be substantial environmental effects, but it's possible to design the project to avoid or mitigate those effects to a level less than significant, you can adopt what's known as a mitigated negative declaration. The problem with, or the risk, it's not so much a problem. The risk in doing either a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration is that the standard for judicial review is much lower. It's known as the fair argument standard, which means if there is substantial evidence in the record that there, there may be a potentially significant environmental effect, then an EIR is required. So if you approve a mitigated negative declaration, and there's, for example, a dispute between experts about whether or not there is a significant environmental effect, you lose. And the, the results of losing is that the court will then make you prepare an EIR, and the project can be suspended, a project approval suspended until such time as you prepare and certify an EIR. That can be very expensive and time-consuming. So that's why, to the extent possible, applicants and, and local jurisdictions want to make use of either exemptions, or negative declarations, or mitigated negative declarations, to cut down on the time and expense of preparation of an EIR. But that could be a false economy if you end up in court and lose because of the fair argument standard. So it's really a risk analysis about who might object, and on what basis, do they have substantial evidence that could support a fair argument that there may be an environmental effect? So that's part of the equation that we go through in trying to evaluate what the appropriate process is. So if you're gonna prepare an EIR, you have to hold a scoping meeting. After you hold a scoping meeting with resource agencies and the general public to decide what should be in the EIR, you prepare a draft EIR, and publish that for public comments for a period of 30 to 45 days or longer. And then you have to prepare responses to those comments, and certify a final EIR. So that process can take the minimum time kind of identified under SEQA is 180 days. I don't think I've ever seen an EIR done in that. So it's time to wind up. I am not going to go through the rest of my slides, but there are many other environmental laws that, that can weigh into whether or not there's significant environmental effects, clean air and water, fish and game code, Endangered Species Act, Farmland Preservation Act, Global Warming Solutions, and, and others. So thank you for your time and attention. I'm sure that we will have opportunities to discuss these subjects in much greater detail as we begin specific project reviews. I look forward to working with you on that.
Joel, we'd be happy to come back and talk to you anytime, because he has a lot of knowledge in this area. Joel, it was a very good presentation. Anytime that you want more information on any of these, and he'll come back and.
Yeah, I was gonna let everyone know, it's, you know, Joel is someone that came on a year, little about, year and three months ago. And use him, talk to him, he's got a lot of knowledge, and we're lucky to have him here. And I appreciate all you do, so, once again, he's there as, to educate us. And he's educated me more than I've ever thought I would even know about planning and environmental law and everything else to do with this stuff we're talking about. So thank you, Joel.
Thank you very much. It's really a pleasure and an honor to work with the excellent staff that we have with the county, and I, I frequently tell Barbara this is the best job I've ever had in my career, so I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up we have is our county council, Barbara Thompson.
And mine's gonna be the quickest.
I don't know. I don't know, mine might be a little quicker, no.
Thanks, Joel.
I'm just gonna take it off Share.
Well, no, I want Share too. I just need my presentation up, it's on her desk.
Is it on the laptop?
Good presentation.
No, it was a little, it was a little. No, it was a little, it was a little, I put the thumb down.
Am I speaking now?
It might be your commercial.
Yeah.
What's it going to take?
Which one is it? This one, this top one?
Yeah. We have to share until... Is that Tiffany's only one that's on there right now?
No, there, it's all. This one, share, and present. Okay.
We'll just toggle. We'll toggle with the arrows.
Okay, this is going to be a fairly brief training here, and we'll be talking about some of these other issues in more depth later. So assessment appeals, you will be sitting as the county board of equalization to hear appeals on property valuation. Those are started with the owner filing an appeal form with the clerk of the board. There's periods of time that are involved with that. They can be waived with a signed waiver from the owner. There's a, it's a very detailed process with specific ways to produce, to introduce evidence and burdens of proof. It's very much like a hearing where one party will go first, then there'll be questions on the other party. We have a specific procedure that's set forth. So for example, the burden of proof is different for single-family dwellings, where the burden of proof is on the assessor to show that the valuation that's proposed by the owner is incorrect and that the assessor's valuation is correct. Otherwise, the burden of proof is on the owner to show that the owner's valuation is correct, and they cannot just come into the boardroom indicating that they believe that their value is correct. Usually, it's supported by specific evidence to show how the, they have to show how the assessor's value was incorrect and why their valuation would be correct. The evidence is presenting regarding the valuation, the hearing's under oath, and we'll have specific training regarding the assessment before the first assessment appeals boards are held. Does the board have any questions regarding that or moving on? Okay, so county service areas. This is how we finance, in part, new development, because new development, it's pretty well-known for many, many years, that new development does not pay for itself, and the 1% that the county collects, I'm sorry, of the property taxes, the county only receives a small percentage of that. I think it's about 11% overall, because the majority of it goes to state entities. So new development does not pay for itself. There's, if you had a new development of multimillion-dollar homes, then perhaps it would. The cutoff, there is a cutoff amount that they've calculated over a certain dollar amount.
I don't want to interrupt you, but please, let's differentiate between CSAs and CFDs, because we're going more to the CFDs. CSAs are kind of running away. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes.
Sorry to bother you.
We're going to cover both.
Okay, sorry, I just don't want to make...
It's all good.
Yes. Okay, so they're both have been, they're both, both, CSAs and CFDs are both a mechanism to fund the service and to provide the service. In an ideal world, most urban-level services would be provided in a city, but in the county, there's been several urban-level residential subdivisions that have been formed in the county that need services provided. Traditionally, these were served by county service areas that were created. Other counties have dealt with the situation differently and formed county, community service districts. Those have their own issues with serving them. I came with it from a county that had many, many county service, county, community service districts with varying degrees of the success. So they're, they have the ability to be managed by the board or by an independent body. But the county service areas are like little tiny areas where, for specific subdivisions. So traditionally, in the old days, the county could just establish a tax, and it was placed on the tax rolls to collect money for those services and those CSAs. Then Prop 213 came along and Prop 218, and no longer could the county just establish a tax to collect the necessary money to provide those services. There are five CSAs that were formed so long ago in the county that they are called AB-8 entities, and they share a part of the 1%, and therefore, they have a funding mechanism without adopting a fee. And those are listed there. For those CSAs that have no part of the 1% and that are not an AB-8 entity, we've established a fee process through a fee report, a Prop 218 process that was completed around 2009, 2010. Some, I think we went out about three times to try to get as many of the CSAs to approve a fee as possible. The ones that did not approve a fee, the services were generally placed on an inactive status or only on very critical service needs, but items like roads were not actively maintained since it's been 10 years since services were stopped in some of the CSAs. Now, some of the CSAs would like to come back and become perhaps active because now the roads are no longer being maintained if they've been inactive for a 10-year period of time. This was a, 2000, this was reported, presented in a prior report to the board that there was 32 active CSAs, but of those CSAs, only approximately two-thirds of them have active services that are actively being provided. The other ones that are still in existence, the county's going to go in a process of perhaps dealing with the ones that are not active, but these are the ones that are active plus the five that were mentioned previously that have the AB-8. So these are the ones that actually have a fee imposed via a tax. Now, CFDs, the county switched between a process where we normally establish a CSA for each subdivision to start forming CFDs, and that started around 2015 or so. We have two CFDs right now. The first one's for Santa Ana Ranch subdivision only, that's 2015-01. And there's a community, county-wide community facilities district, 2018-01, that has, it was set up for three subdivisions, two of which have started to build. And also, the new subdivisions that are formed in the future will annex in at a minimal cost to that county-wide community facilities district. The facilities districts allow better funding mechanism, so a CFD can fund both capital improvements and they can provide services. And unlike county service areas, which cannot provide a funding for a general governmental service, this is very critical, the CFDs can collect money for general governmental services, such as police, fire, district attorney, library, et cetera, et cetera, that services that are provided countywide, and it actually is a significant amount of money per parcel. So, so the first CSCFD, the Santa Ana Ranch, you notice that they have a $684 per parcel. And the new Brigantino one, which, I'm sorry, there's Brigantino, Fay Bennett, and then the Bluffs, were all part of this. The rate per parcel's increased to like 1,500 for Brigantino and 1,700 for Bennett Ranch. I did not go back and relook at the budget numbers, but I believe that we're collecting about $751 per parcel just for governmental expenses, and the rest of that is project-specific expenses. So the county is collecting more money for general governmental services as well as the project development, project costs in the CFDs. Not that it's important right now, but for fees, you cannot collect the money unless the service is generally available. Assessments and taxes you can collect for services that are going to be done in the future but may not be available yet. For example, if you're maybe building a well or something. We already talked about police power. I think we've already talked enough about preemption, and we've spoken about ordinances. I'd love to talk to you more about taxes and everything, but I think we'll do that on a different day about the different requirements to approve a general tax versus a special tax, et cetera. Does the board want me to go into more depth on any of those right now? Does that answer the question about CFAs and CFDs?
I think so.
Okay.
Perfectly stated.
Thank you.
Oh, and I just wanted to note that there was just a typo in the last presentation, Sixth District Court of Appeals, just minor, minor. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. So thank you. We're getting, we're getting closer. So I got the last part here, so I'm going to go ahead and be brief with this. I wanted to go over a few things. I'm going to kind of break this up in a few sections. One is, I think it's important for your board members to understand, we obviously don't have a chair or a vice chair yet, so I think it's important for you to understand that there is a, we have a county, so if you're in your rules and procedures PDF, if you look at the second page there in the committees, it outlines that the chair shall appoint a committee at such times and so on and so forth. So historically, what we have done is the chair actually appoints, and we have an example, I believe they're on your desk here, of the actual committees scheduled for 2020, okay? And there are different committees that may be part of. As an example, the second page here, we have, actually, we have the Monterey Bay Community Power at that particular time, that was what the name was. Now it's the 3CE, which is the community, Central Coast Community Energy. That's what it is. And so that name has changed. However, they have their own bylaws, they have their own regs when it comes to operating or being a part of that board. There's two of them. We have a policy board and an operations board. Board members will be, the board members that are here, they're, one of them will, actually, there's two. There's a delegate and an alternate. And one of the board members will be regularly attending this particular meeting, which we have outlined in this matrix here of when you would be meeting. They have an operational board that also meets monthly. So the policy board meets, I believe, quarterly, and for the CAOs and the city managers within the, I believe it's now five counties, within those counties, the cities, city jurisdictions, we all meet together, and we actually have a board meeting as well. So just wanted to let you know that your board, the chair, whoever the chair is, whoever the, and actually, I'd like to preface this as well, staff has met, this is a very unique situation where we don't have a chair coming in and then handing off the chairmanship to a new chair. So what we decided to do is actually have the longest-tenured boarder supervisor open up the meeting, because we have to have a board member open the meeting up. So that'll be Supervisor Mark Medina. So he will open that up, open up the meeting, and then at that point, you guys will then move forward with picking a chair and a vice chair. But with that comes a responsibility, so whoever, and we don't know who the chair is going to be, whoever should be thinking about developing who's going to be on these committees, okay? And I just wanted to make sure you're all aware of it. So we have the committees here, and we have, if you open up the actual staff report, you'll notice there are a lot of attachments. I don't know if you noticed that. There are a lot of bylaws for all of those committees. We don't have them all, but we have a very good majority of them. We also have a matrix that was developed that outlines most of the committees that we have with a website that actually will link you to the content or the webpage or the bylaws. And so we're still developing that, so there'll still be some changes and updates, but I wanted you to look, to make sure that you are aware of that and that you understood where to go. We should, you know, that's posted on our website, but it should be completed soon. So I just wanted to make sure. But most of it's populated. If you look at the, at the second page there, there is actually a list of committees for each supervisor. So you, all you have to do is look at it at a glance, okay, which, which committee am I going to be responsible for? And then we have the ad hoc committees that were discussed earlier today with Judith. We talked about the different types of committees. And so there are different ones here that we have, and they vary from year to year, depending on the situation, depending on something that comes up. So a good example is, we're going to be discussing at the Tuesday board meeting, the possibility of a round two of funding. We're going to review our budget with the CRF. We're going to review the million dollars, and we're going to discuss those programming and what was done this last year. And you know, with things, the way things are right now, things aren't looking good for some businesses. So there's an opportunity there for us to move forward to assist our community. So in that case, there can be an ad hoc created for that. So we did this last year, is we actually had a CARES Act Fund Committee, and then we had a Roadmap to Recovery Committee, as you see in the very back page there. So, you know, in this case, you know, we can create a COVID-19 programming committee, the two board members as an example, and go from there. So anyways, it's just an example. I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, and I wanted to make sure that you're aware of the obligation based on the rules of procedure that our board members have to follow. Another at a glance is our County of San Bonito Local Boards and Commissions, roles, responsibilities, and composition. This is a kind of a good, a document to look at from a glance of what is it? What is it that this committee, what does it do? And you know, I think it's important for you to understand, like, when you are advocating or requesting someone, maybe a planning commissioner or whoever, to come in to do some work for you with, you know, sitting in on a committee, it'd be good to have this information. So we wanted to make sure that was available to you. If you have any questions, we'd be more than willing to work with you on that. And it's a good, it's a good at a glance, kind of really gives you a kind of an idea of how many times, you know, these committees meet and kind of what the responsibilities are of that committee. So I thought that was a good one. And then here's the matrix, as I mentioned before, which is attached. So that was, I think, what was really important for this Tuesday, for you to be aware of it.
Can I just kind of add for clarification?
Sure.
That you addressed the air with my name being chair on the agenda?
Thank you. I will do that for the record.
I don't want anyone to think there was not anything improper. I had nothing to do with it, but it looks like we've already designated somebody.
So we, so staff out of the clerk's office, in particular Jennifer, thought it'd be nice to have you as the chair. No, that's not true. No, unfortunately, there's a certain part of the agenda that you have before us that we don't have access to, this county staff. And that is, if you look at the first page as an example, you have the names of all the supervisors. Normally, we have them installed, vice chair and chair, whoever that's going to be. So what happened is, this year, we requested the change for the front page as well as the second page. We also requested that that be done for all the other agenda items. Unfortunately, it didn't do that. So we requested it, you know, hey, can you guys, this one wasn't done yet, so we asked them, but they forgot to remove the chair from you because Jaime de la Cruz was District Three, and so that's, oh, District Five, my apologies, District Five. And so they just, they left the chair there, so.
I saw last night, I'm like, oh, wow, you've been promoted.
I actually asked Jennifer to send out an email notifying that it was, you know, it was an error.
But this one, for priority's sake, you know, I just don't want anyone to think that.
Yeah, no.
We had decided on something unlawfully.
And that's good, for the record, to say that. So appreciate that. With regards to conducting the meeting, I just wanted to share with you some of the documents that we have, the board meetings, and you know, we've been highlighting that already. So I think for the most part, you have all that information as well as the rules of Going back to the board meetings, I just wanted to share with you that within this, we actually outlined how you can conduct the meeting, the third, fourth, and I think even fifth, maybe sixth pages there of what to say. So we've kind of already gone through that. I'll provide you, you know, some, maybe the sixth page, if you go to the, almost second to last on that particular one, adjournment. We're going to actually, I'm going to have one of your board members probably adjourn us, but it gives you what to say under adjournment, you know? So that's just an example, where to go. We want to make sure that you were armed and ready to go, so whoever does become chair and vice chair understands what to do and how to conduct the board meeting. So we thought that was important. Going back to the rules of procedure, one of the things that was discussed were some possible... possible changes. This is, let me see here, I think it's, yeah, it's about three pages. And we actually have made some edits. I think it's about 19 pages, I think it is, we've been working on this. I think it's probably a good thing to come back to the board and at the board retreat to discuss some of those changes. I think some of it's more just being more aware of scheduling, what's a, you know, what kind of a vote, what is a four fifths vote, what type of items, as an example. Majority, you know, a three fifths vote and having those. So just a little bit more detail when it comes to the, to the actual procedures and what to follow. So we wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that. So we're going to come back with a lot more detail, and then you guys can, we can all talk about it, and you guys can provide staff some direction on some of those items. So that's more or less it. You know, I want to thank staff for coming in on Saturday and all the great work that was done. There was a lot of preparation for today's meeting. This is, this is a first phased approach for education, oversight, and policymaking. One of the things that we envision is to have a phase two. And that phase two is going to come at the board retreat. And so we're going to talk about now, education with regards to operations, what is happening with the budget, what's happening with our roads, our infrastructure, all of those things. We want to educate you with our environment from an operation point of view. So we look forward to that. We've been working the last few months on developing agenda items for that as well. So there'll be a lot of work that'll be done or has been done already, but I think it'll be very educational, so. So with that, I appreciate everyone's time and your time. Yes, any public comment?
Members of the public who wish to speak, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. We have no speakers via Zoom at this time.
There was a quick request from, actually, you know, I think it might be good just to quickly highlight, you want to quickly just highlight that, if you don't mind? It was brought up from our management analyst, Dulce Alonso. And this is regards to your responsibilities. This is going to be kind of key for the next board meeting when it comes to the financial corporation, so.
So I just wanted to let you know that as board members, you would be part of the finance corp. And the purpose of the finance corp is for, to assist the county with financial and transactions, remodeling, rehabilitation, facilities, land, so that, that, those types of activities take place under the finance corp. On the next agenda, you'll meet under the finance corp and assign the members for the director roles, and then adjourn, adjourn it.
Thank you. So that, you know, just, we wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And we'll, there's a lot of documentation in the, for those of you that have seen the agenda, what to do and what to say with that, but we'll, staff will be here to assist you. So yeah, with that being said, would Supervisor B. Gonzalez address the last item on our agenda?
Okay, so I'm acting as if I'm chair, of course. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
So we'll then go ahead and adjourn the meeting with the meeting date of January 12, 2021, for the next meeting.
You have to vote.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Four to one. Four to zero.
Okay. So motion adjourned, I mean, all right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good presentation.
And thank you for all the hard work you guys did. Wow.
Goodbye.